On deck circle there. So the budget, I want to thank Russ and Denise and the finance staff, everybody involved in putting this together. As you can see, when you count all of our funds, even though we spend a great deal of time on the general fund, our total city operating budget is $174 million, plus our capital improvement programs, nearly 119 million. So you can see that we are pretty substantial operation here. Most of the focus because of the property tax is on the general fund, which is 56 and a half million dollars for 2024. It's a 3.37% increase over the 23 budget. And I'll give you a few highlights of that. The overall levy is proposed to increase 3.99%. During our budget, early budget workshops, there was a discussion about 3 to 4%, so we kept that in mind. So it wasn't just a coincidence that it's under 4%. That was very intentional on our part, based on the council direction. The tax rate is proposed at $12.50, which is an increase. But I think Russ will talk a little bit later about how the assessed value is still very much lower compared to our equalized value. In fact, we're actually below 70% of full assessed value. So that's why I try to focus on what the levy is and what that increase is. Because you start talking about the tax rate with our values being so low, it really doesn't have a ton of relationship. Of course, we've been talking for many months about shared revenue and about $2 million more in the general fund. And as you'll see, one of my titles, which I normally don't do too much editorializing with my subtitles, but I put shared revenue in the nick of time. And I can't understate that enough. Inflation has certainly been a huge impact on us, particularly with commodities such as fuel, other utilities. That's been a huge challenge with everybody putting together their budgets. Even with the shared revenue increase of $2 million, there are no proposed increases in staffing beyond a couple areas where maybe a part-time position has been three quarters time, we're upping it to full-time. There's not much more than that. There are some that council approved over the course of the last year, but that's really about it. There is an element in the shared revenue formula that says it has to be put towards public works and transportation and public safety. And can we do it? With inflation, it's really easy to have that allocated to those areas. In fact, one of the public safety itself is going at $1.8 million. So we're 90% there. And that doesn't include what we're currently talking to the bargaining units about raises that might get built into their contract, which Mike, there will be an increase. So that $2 million will be gone just on public safety alone. That's before we talk transportation or public works. So you can see that that won't be much of an issue. I mentioned commodities and general inflation, then debt service as well. That's another increased area. And that's because we're doing more in trying to borrow on a 10-year schedule if we can, if it's at all possible, or if it's required. In the past, we were borrowing for vehicles that we say, well, we think they'll make 20 years. Well, if you're paying them for 20 years, you better keep them for at least 20 years. Those vehicles, because the life of them can be gone within a couple of years after you start seeing the aging signs of a vehicle. So we started borrowing those on 10 years, and that's part of it. But it's also good for us to have shorter-term borrowing, because that looks better in the eyes of the investor services that rate our debt. So that's been something that we've done in recent years, and that's what's bumped it up as well. You may recall that for those on the council, last year, we borrowed a little more in '22 for some 2023 projects. That was done intentionally, because we were concerned that the interest rates were going to rise so much that it would have been more expensive. We knew some specific project we were planning to do in '23, and we borrowed from it in '22. So we had extra debt service that we had to do in '23 as a result of that. So we had planned to take $2 million out of our general fund balance, which is very strong, and I'll talk about that in a minute. And that is not going to have to happen in 2024. So that amount went down. That's why that unclassified area is down nearly $2 million. It's pretty much because we don't have to do that extra payment to debt service in '24. Truth be told, the interest rate was about the same from one year to the next. So we took a chance. It wasn't a great payoff, but it wasn't a bad payoff either. We just did it, and we had good fund balance, strong fund balance to do that. Some of the other expenditures, I think I've highlighted those. And we can get into those when we get into the departments. Revenue, I talked about shared revenue, which was very good. The other one, of course, interest earnings. With inflation comes higher interest rates. So we're paying higher on debt, but we're also doing better on interest earnings. But that also makes up for, we have reduced parking fine revenue as well as tickets. The courts are using a lot of diversion programs. And so they're not necessarily people who have a forfeiture with the city through the county courts. They're getting diverted to another program. So revenues are down in that area as well. And that's been a recent phenomenon the last few years. It isn't just, it happened in 2023. But we've been planning for that as well. But those revenues have gone down as well, which has been another challenge. General transportation aids, while we certainly appreciated what the state was doing with shared revenue, the gas tax revenue has been pretty static. And we actually saw nearly a 3% decrease in general transportation aids. And that's something we have to keep our eye on. Another one that the council has talked about, one of the things particularly they asked me to do was to work on the municipal services program, MSP. It's basically payment by the state for properties that are owned by the state here in the city. We are actually the third-largest recipient of the municipal services payment program of all cities in the state, after Madison and Milwaukee, because of all the state-owned properties that we have. The state has not increased that. But while I'm still having discussions, and I spoke specifically with Madison and Milwaukee, and I think what we'd like to do is identify some other cities that are also benefiting from this program. Because quite frankly, the state legislature isn't going to do something to help Madison and Milwaukee. But since we're number three in that batting order, I think it's appropriate for us to maybe get some other cities on board with this. And I know there's, City of Whitewater in particular is interested in this. So I'll be continuing to work on that. Whether council gives it to me as a goal or not, it's just something we have to keep going. If we were fully funded under that program, I think we'd get, what, another technically, Russ, maybe another up to $2 million?
Yeah, we're about, the state is giving us 38 cents on a dollar. So the state goes and looks at the valuation of the state-owned property. And they also look at the expenses that we have for public safety, police, and fire. And those communities that provide garbage collection, they also reimburse that. But we do not provide refuse collection to state-owned property. So they go through the formula, they calculate what your payments do, but based on appropriations, we get 38 cents on a dollar. That's one of those areas where we kind of, they have a nice formula. The program's great, but then they decide from a statutory provision, only fund 38 cents on a dollar. It's all driven by appropriations.
But even some of our state reps, when we had meetings with them, they didn't realize that we provide ambulance service out to the prison, for example. If there's an escaped prisoner, the guards don't go looking for the escaped prisoner. Our police go looking for the escaped prisoner. Once they're outside the boundaries, they go take care of that. If there are arrests to be made at the prison, it's our people that go up there and do the arrest. So there's a lot that people don't really understand of the services we provide. It's not just that we're getting it because the state doesn't pay taxes. It's because we provide those very services that Russ outlined. And we're not talking about paying for overhead for the finance department of the city manager's office. It's very specific. It's police and fire and refuse, which we don't provide. So even with that, even with us providing zero refuge service, we're still the third-largest community in the state. So it's something I think we need to pursue. As recent as 15 years ago, we were still getting 80 cents on the dollar. This has been a bipartisan cut. Both Democrats and Republicans have cut this program over the years. This is really about fairness for municipalities that have that. So the council had given me direction a few years ago to work on that, and I haven't given up. We just got, we took a right turn to get shared revenue, and I think that paid off for us. But we got to get back to MSP. Lastly, fund balance. We're still at a very strong fund balance. The council has a policy that our fund balance should be between 16 and 30%. When it's below 16, the council even sometimes has increased the levy to get our fund balance back up. The 16%, because it's a percentage, that will grow with the budget. So the amount that we need is generally higher each year, because the budget goes higher. But that's that cushion, which I think generally is about, what, a two-to-three-month range that auditors typically recommend as well. We're actually exceeding our fund balance. We are projecting a fund balance at the end of '23 of about 33.76%. So we're over our 30% threshold by about $2.1 million. The council may choose to consider some one-time investments in debt reduction, capital projects, things of that nature. I would not recommend using that for operations, but certainly we could use it for debt relief and things like that. One-time things that we can, if we no longer have it, then we don't have to worry about it getting built in. It's-
If you're interested in the actual fund balance analysis, it's on page 45 of the book, which is a past history of the year-end. It also includes a projection for '23, and then what we're at. And on page 46 is a graph, if you want to see it in graph. Those are the numbers. So if you're looking at some-
And Russ liked to point out, the fund balance really started to increase about the time he got here. He just said, just as a coincidence, but it's been very strong. And I think we have an opportunity here. And as we're talking through deliberations, the council should keep that fund balance in mind for, if you're looking at some creative things, this is definitely an area of opportunity for you. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, we can get into transportation and Mr. Collins and his staff.
Mark, before you do that, I just want to make a couple other quick points. There's a whole tab, if you haven't had a chance to look at it, in the introduction section that includes some, just general information from the city on page one. We have some population and demographic information that comes from a program we utilize called ClearGov, which includes some statistical information. We have a listing of all, Mark talked about all the various funds that we use that account for activities. So in government, we call it fund accounting, not fund, but fund with a D. So we have separate funds. They have specific purposes. Basically, in general terms, we have the general fund that covers all the operational expenses. We have special revenue funds that account for specific purposes and receipting of certain monies. We have our debt service fund. We have capital project funds, which include our tax increment financing districts. Then we have our enterprise funds, which include all our utilities, water, sewer, storm. And it also includes parking and transit. And then we have some other kind of trust and agency funds. We have a fund for our employee benefits, workers' comp, and then our internal service fund. So those are the different categories and descriptions are also in that introductory section. And if you've got any questions along the line, don't be afraid to ask. But I just wanted to give you a quick overview on where things are at.
Thanks, Russ.
In your book, we had some questions. As we label things and as you're looking at the book, the 2024 budget request is actually the fourth column from the left, second column, third column from the right. It says 9/28/23 latest version. That's really, should have been re-titled as our '24 budget recommendation. So if you're looking at the columns, if you're looking at any of the columns in any of the departments, it's the 9/28/23 latest version is actually the budget request or recommendation for your consideration. Just wanted to point that out. So with that, I think we're going to start with transit?
Yes. So, morning. We have five budgets to go through. So yes, I'd like to start with transit, since that's our biggest one, page 386.
That's behind the enterprise fund tab.
Yes. So I'll just kind of carry on with some of Mark's themes. The first one being that, as you know, with the shared revenue agreement, well, that was good for some things. One thing that went overlooked, I think, a little bit was that, as part of that, the transit was taken out of the transportation fund in the state and was put into the general fund. This year, it shouldn't have. In the back, however, we're not sure what that's going to do in the future. So that's something to keep an eye on, and that's throughout the state, obviously. Transit is eligible for shared revenue. I know that sometimes gets overlooked as well. It's eligible, you can use the shared revenue for transit as well, as Mark had talked about, public works and public safety. So that's something we'll have to keep an eye on as we go through the next few years. I do think that a few people were aware of it, but I think some of the legislature overlooked that. As far as our local budget here, we, our local and state aid, we've budgeted this year at 56%. So that's federal and state aid. Historically, going back to like 2006, it was about 60%. And then it gradually declined. We're bottomed out in around 2020, around 53%. The last couple of years, they've increased it. Federal trans dates went up a little bit. State was pretty stagnant. This year, they were able to bump it up a little bit. I think part of that is with our budgeting, because ACTs have been helping transit over the last two, three years. So we are budgeted a little bit higher than we have been in the past. So we're able to budget at 56% this year. Like I said, we've been down to 53 in the past. So that's going to help the local levy a little bit. However, as far as our local share goes, and I'll just back it for one quick second. So how our transit budgeting works is we take our overall budget, and then federal and state aid covers, like I said, this year it's budgeted at 56%. After that, then we take any fares or advertising revenue that we get, and then what's left is the state share, or not the state share, I'm sorry, the local share. So the local levy is basically, it starts at, it's been around 20% after you take federal and the state and the fares. So that's kind of where we're at. With the local share, that has remained unchanged since about 2020. This year, it's budgeted to go up like $50,000. And the only way that is possible is we've been balancing the budget with transit fund balance. Fortunately, over the years, we've been pretty fiscally conservative in transit, and we've been able to save up a little bit of fund balance, which has helped keep the levy down, as well as it gives us a little bit of a balance if we ever have any transit, capital projects, or something where we need local share and we aren't able to fund it locally. So it is good. Just like the general fund, it's good to have a little bit of a fund balance. So those are the real high-level notes. To get into some more specifics, this last year, some of the things that we've done, and I want to thank my staff as well. I have Steve Thomas, executive business operation manager, and then Brian Greaseback, who is our operations mechanics manager, as well as our street painting and signs manager. So he wears a couple hats. But our staff did a great job last few years. We get audited. They call it a review. I call it an audit. But it's every three years by the FTA. And they go through like all 22 areas that we have, including operations, safety, drug and alcohol testing. It's pretty extensive. And we got through that with zero findings, which is a huge accomplishment. That is very, very hard to do. So I'm very proud of our staff for being able to do that this year. That was probably our biggest accomplishment this past year. Some of the other things we did is we completed phase one of the downtown transit center. So what that was, is we improved the safety and security down there. We improved our cameras down there. We repaved a lot of the platform, eliminated a lot of chirping hazards that we were having issues with, kind of spruced it up, as well as we were able to expand on our, we had a real small building there with basically two restrooms. We were able to add a driver break room and also a customer service window there. So now we're able to operate there at least one day a week to offer pass sales, and also have a supervisor's office down there, where he can be right with the action there, which helps with our safety and security, as well as any issues drivers have. So we were able to complete that this year, as well as we were able to put two new hybrid buses and two clean diesel buses on the road. We've had good success with the clean diesel buses, the hybrids. The jury's still out on that. We have some of the newer technologies, so we were kind of testing some of those things. With the coming year, one of the things we'll be doing is a facility study. That'll play into the city's capital plan as well. But we also need to do that, another major reason we need to do that is if we ever are going to consider electric buses, which we have over the years, we need to find out if our facilities can even accommodate them. You know, we have things with like garage door height restrictions, as well as lift restrictions in the maintenance shop, as well as we have to figure out charging infrastructure and if and how we could do that. So our next buses that would be slated for replacement are in 2025. So we're hoping to have this study done next year. So that'll give us a little guidance if it's even possible with our current facilities. And if it is, what type of upgrades would need to be done to even consider electric buses. So we're not quite there yet, but we have, we do get that question a lot. We are diligently working on that. We also started with our phase two of the downtown transit center. We're working with a real estate consultant, and then also putting together a request for proposal for architectural engineering services. We were successful with funding federally for the project. We have some leftover cares and ARPA funding that they have approved for this project, as well as we were granted another capital grant from the state with some other federal money for that project. So it's pretty well-funded. It's in the CIP for next year, so we're proceeding with that project, which will add a second platform, as well as a climate-controlled public waiting area. And we know there'll be some issues with that, but I think it is important to our current clients, as well as anybody that might be a discretionary user. I mean, our buses come every 30 minutes, but you can imagine if you ever, you know, even if you, any type of public transit, whether it be buses, trains, or planes, I mean, that is important that you have a restroom available. So that will be, we're looking forward to that. And that will also allow us to get some of, we do allow some of our partners for intercity transit, such as Lemers, which is run by Port USA currently, but they have an intercity route that stops downtown that currently has to board in a light. So passage to get on and off on the road here, they'll get them off the road. And then we also, Amtrak also has a connection through here that they currently stop by the university. But this will give us some more opportunities for intercity as well. So we're currently working on that. This year, we successfully rolled out the transit student pass program. Steve's been heavily involved with that. It's so far been working pretty well. We have had a few behavioral issues, but it's gotten better, I will say. So those are our major projects for this year. We are fortunate, like I said, that cares and ARPA have helped keep our local share down quite a bit, as well as helped with some of these major projects. The only other thing I wanted to mention is that our expenses were down a little bit as well, since we just continued Route 10. So we had a contract with Colbison, which was, it was a pretty good-sized contract. Now we're running that as a on-demand type service, so the city cab, so cab-type service on demand, scheduled a day ahead. That pilot ends at the end of March. We're not sure what's going to happen with that going forward. It's had limited success, I would say. I mean, we started with maybe 10 rides a day. It was down to about five over the summer. We're keeping an eye on that to see what happens now. And then we also, the county funds the local share, so we're waiting to kind of hear what they want to do with that. We reached out a couple times, but I haven't heard back on if they want to continue that pilot.
Yeah, this was historically a county program that we agreed to run it through GoTrans. This predates both Jim and me. But the idea was that we would be able to take advantage of the federal and state funding that we get for transit by allowing this program to be run. The county has varying support for the program, so it'll be up to them if they want to continue it or not. We'll continue to, we provide all the administrative services for this program at no cost to the county, and then make them available for the federal and state transit funding, which is, Jim said, about 56 cents on the dollar right now. So that's pretty good. But I think they've pushed back on the local share, and it's like, well, it's originally your program. You have to decide if you want to continue it or not. So we haven't heard yet. It may have something to do with what's going on, county budget as well. But there's support that waivers on the program. I don't know if it'll continue.
Yeah, and obviously, it's, like I said, it's limited success. So it doesn't have huge ownership, no. But it's important to those people. They're using it, yes. So I guess we'll see where that goes. So that's kind of my high-level presentation on transit. So if you have any questions on that.
Just, I don't know if it's not philosophical, but I'm kind of interested where you get your information from on what we should do. I know you said, doing a facility study on what we can do and what we have the ability to do. But getting back to the electric bus situation, I just heard a story where the manufacturers of vehicles are backing off on producing electric vehicles, because the cost of using them is astronomical, and the technology is not where some people think it is. So where would you draw your information from on whether that would be something the city of Oshkosh should do, and it would be something that we can afford and would be good for citizens?
Sure. So a couple different sources. So we work a lot with our peers. So currently in La Crosse, the loose hat, electric buses for a couple of years, La Crosse is getting some this year, as well as Racine and Milwaukee. So number one, we work with our peers. Brian, who's our maintenance manager, they have a maintenance committee with our peers that he meets with regularly, and they discuss things like that as well, like the systems that have them, how well are they working. So we get our information from that, as well as obviously all of our publications to see. We're not quite there yet, but I think we're not a leader in that technology. So we're kind of in a wait-and-see mode, like, let's see if it works for these other systems and how well it works. So we wouldn't come to you with proposals on electric buses until we were confident that it could be done, and then obviously how much it would cost. And I think with this facility study, it's going to give us some better information on, you know, if it's possible and how much it's going to cost to do that. And I don't know, I don't, Brad, if you had anything to add?
Yeah, the biggest thing we see with the electric buses is the range that they can go, especially in our climate here. If it's really cold, you're running auxiliary heaters in there, which really decrease the mileage that the buses are capable of going. And in the summer, it's the same thing with the air conditioner. So that has a big impact on how far the buses are able to be on a route before they need to be recharged. Other than that, you know, the cost of them is a huge impact, too. For an electric bus, you're roughly around $900 to $1 million. On diesel, half of that, you know, $450 to $500. So there's a big difference in price. And then if you start comparing your value on return over the 12 years, that's where, you know, we'd have to come in and look at it and see if it's actually getting- that's where, you know, we'd have to come in and look at it and see if it's actually getting better, the technology, or if it's not worth it yet.
Thank you.
In terms of ridership, how's it, how's it been going for 23? And then I guess as a second part, because you talked about the the new student passes, a different process this year, I guess.
Yeah.
Right to it, like did it, did that different process, has it reduced the number of riders we've had from the school district?
Right. I'm going to involve my staff a little bit. I'm going to let Steve take that question.
Sure.
Yes, as far as overall ridership, it's up.
Yeah. Is there a chair so that the microphone can pick him up?
Your booming voice is very effective, but Jake's probably saying, get a little closer.
All right. Overall ridership's up about 2% versus last year. We're not at the pre-pandemic levels yet. Student ridership, the passes versus last year, they had a little bit over 900. We're well in like the mid 800s passes issue. Student ridership use, I'm not sure the student ridership is down, but the use of the pass program is slightly down. But we think that's more of riding after school. Last year, a lot of the student rides were done after 3 o'clock. That we've seen drop down. We may see that increase with the colder weather coming up. But overall, enrollment of the pass program was outstanding. I think we had about 85% of our passes issued with like the week before school after. But we put 151, pretty pretty close. It was 130 and we probably put about another 20 hours of additional staff hours at the schools, at the school district, back to school fairs. We've made ourselves available for backup student ID, we're, you know, make up pictures. We were there. So at the time, the schools have reached out for us. We've made ourselves available. So it's been, it's been very successful. Up until a week or two ago, we've had a couple of small incidents, but the incidents on the buses have been greatly decreased. So it's early, but so far, so good on that. So I'm pretty, pretty proud of that program so far.
Thank you. Anything else on transit? If not, then let's go to the parking utility, which is just a couple pages in front of that. As you know, so parking, although it's one of my smaller budgets and issues, it is one of the more controversial ones, as you all know, whether it's parking lots or on-street parking, can be pretty controversial. A couple of things I just wanted to note in the parking utility. So this year we mill in, and most of our projects in the parking utility are done through capital budget because we don't really have any revenue coming in other than a little bit of tickets for the parking utility. So the capital, that's how the city is is handling it, since we do not have per se paid parking. We do the capital projects as part of our capital budget. So the projects we've done this year, the Millon Overlay, the 400 West Lot. We did some work at the 24th Avenue bolt launch with spot improvements, as well as some milling and overlaying the self-park tennis courts and the tech miller cul-de-sac. The next current 2024, we're looking at reconstructing the Sallyport area that over by the police department. They've had a lot of issues there, a lot of cracking and tripping hazards, things like that. But the one thing I just wanted to discuss briefly, as far as parking utility, is my ongoing discussions with the vid. They previously had contributed, started all at 70,000, it's down to 15. Last couple of years, they had an agreement where they don't contribute to the parking utility per se. You know that they have the ask for revenue that we talked about earlier. The current proposal from, that I've been working with them on is to, at one point, we were talking about the paid parking again. We've had that discussion and consultants look at that over the years. But where we landed currently is what they would like to do is offer leased stalls to businesses at $50 a month. So that is probably going to come to the transportation committee in the coming months and then ultimately if they're okay with it to council. What they would like to do, and I think it's not a bad idea, I mean, we do currently offer leased stalls, but this would be 24-hour leased stalls at $50 a month in the city parking lots. They want to start with maybe 40 stalls. It would solve one problem is that in that the 400 East Lot, back when that was redeveloped, there is a agreement that's expiring where some of those businesses, because the city needed some access to what used to be the alley behind those businesses and used to allow parking. So the city got an easement to use some of that for the parking lot reconstruction and in return, they got some reserved spots in the back of the lot and that agreement is going to be expiring. So if we do offer these stalls at $50 a month, that would be in lieu of that. So where they were free for them during the term of agreement now, if they wanted to continue that, they could do that at $50 a month. They also are having an issue or one of the concerns is with parking for their employees. They don't want them obviously using the customer's spots and moving their car every few hours. This then, they think would allow their business owners to pay $50 a month and have an assigned spot that they could use for their employees or their customers. So that that's currently what the discussion is. I I think it's not a bad idea. We still have to discuss where those would be and what potential signage might be allowed. But overall, I think the concept would be okay and that would kind of solve that issue with the contracts that are expired, where the contract doesn't expire. So that's probably the new news as far as the parking utility. Everything else is pretty much status quo.
Anybody have any just questions on parking?
I guess just a comment. I think that's a fantastic idea, that $50. I mean, all those parking lots are redone at zero cost to the business owner. I know I had one there at the time. And then, you know, their upkeep is done by the city. So I think that's a fantastic idea.
Yep. So I think the bid parking committee, we've been working with them and that was, that's their current proposal. Like I said, I I think if we can come to some agreement on what we can allow for signage, then it'll be coming forward in the coming months. If there's any, no more questions on that, then we will go to the street lighting fund, which I had Denise help me find this morning. I wasn't sure exactly where it is, but it's on page 190. That's considered a special revenue fund. Street lighting is basically that, street lighting budget is, it's more or less electricity. There's not really much more to it. So we pay about a million dollars a year for street lighting. And like I said, that's mostly going to the utility for the cost of electricity. It's pretty much unchanged. Over the years, the city owns street lighting. We've converted what we can to LED, which has helped keep the cost down. WPS or We Energies isn't quite there yet, but I know that's, as they replace them, they're doing that as well. But that is something to consider. It's another thing that's controversial to a limited extent. I mean, there are discussions about whether there's enough street lighting. I know Scooter, who's our electric supervisor, and I get calls and emails constantly about if there's not enough light, if there's too much light, as well as what style poles we use, which we've had that discussion previously. But I I know the police department likes more lights, obviously, and some neighbors like more, some like less, some like them brighter, some like them not as bright. But anyway, it's about a million dollars a year. So I don't think a lot of citizens realize that the city spends a million dollars on streetlights. I mean, it's, you know, a lot of towns you go to don't have any streetlights that are owned by the municipality, so.
One, one side note to that, the street lighting budget, the the maintenance of the street lighting is, the maintenance, the vehicles that we use, the labor for maintaining the street lighting, actually is in the electric budget. Just so, just so you see, like Jim was explaining that, that's primarily electric, electric use and and buying, and buying our own streetlights and our own LED replacements. But the labor, the labor for that budget and all the vehicle usage and everything comes out of the electric budget, just for the new council members, the ones that have been here, for me, bring that up every year, just so that you're aware of that. And the LED, you know, we're, like Jim mentioned, we, we, with the exception, so the park lane, all of our lighting, city-owned lighting's been converted to LED. But we're at that point now that those original LED retrofit packages that we put in are all at or very close to near the end of their life. So, you know, we have to replenish those, you know, those, those retrofit kits and we're finding now it's more beneficial for us just to replace the whole fixture, because a light fixture is designed around the light source. So when we change from the light source it was to LED, we don't get the same performance on those lights. Just, just, those things are coming up, just so you guys are aware of that.
Yeah, I guess I would add to that, this budget has remained at about a million dollars the entire 15 years I've been here. The reason we've been able to keep it at that level has been because of all the retrofits that we did, because the outstanding savings, so.
It was over 70, it was over 75% the original savings from, from what we were paying for. We're going to LED. The the big thing is the spooky gas is not there anymore because the LED technology hasn't changed enough that we're going to see another 70% reduction in that usage. So it's, you will see a little bit because it has got a little bit better, but we're not going to see that same 70, 75% that we saw. And we do have a couple of solar, solar installations out there. We have mounted Paul's Place off of Ninth Street and we just installed some in the Gibson Court area. So we do have some. We're kind of in the testing mode. We found last year, we had quite a few days that were kind of unusual, that we didn't get any sunshine. So we did get some complaints from the citizens out in the Paul's Place area that they're not staying lit all night, but, you know, working with our supplier and, you know, the federal government's solar information, we shouldn't have any issues with them, but we we have. So you may hear some issues from some citizens that, hey, they're not staying on all night, you know. But we we got it kind of evaluated through a couple of seasons, so. But we do, we are, we are looking at that to see if it's a viable option or not, so.
I mean, the, the point is that this year, we're looking at a 3.4% increase in this budget and that's pure utilities, as Jim and Scooter have both said. But we're going to start seeing that because we've been living off of the benefits of that efficiency for literally an entire decade. But now that we've kind of, we've done all the retrofits we can possibly do. So we're going to, you'll see this inch up a little bit, but we've increased the number of streetlights we own. So that's, we've saved on not leasing poles from WPS. But our day of, our day of enjoying the efficiencies is probably coming to an end. And it's not that it's going to go up dramatically. It's going to go up. I mean, it's literally been a million dollars for 15 years, so we've been doing all right.
And some of that's because before Jim got here as predecessors, we did a lot of streetlight reducing. And that's where Jim kind of briefly hit on that, you know, we're starting to get more, more and more calls for, for us to install more and more lights. So, you know, that's where that million dollar savings came in, because, you know, if if we went to done those reductions, we'd be, we'd probably be talking about two and a half million dollars right now instead of a million. So and Jim and I pretty much feel those calls and, you know, we do have a process. They fill out a form and and we take a second look at it to see if it's, falls within our current standards that we, you know, we look at lighting, so. But Mark's right, it's, at some point, it's gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna hit us and, you know, that that dollar amount's going to have to start increasing, so.
So, yeah, I think we covered everything we wanted to do there. Scooter covered. I wanted to mention the solar lights, which he covered, so I think we're good there. If there's no further questions there, then we'll go to electric, which is on page 158. So again, that's the department that's, that's, Scooter manages. We have Scooter as the manager and then we have four city electricians. Some of the things that we've accomplished this last year, they, they helped with the relocate, temporary relocation of the parks department. One of the other things that we've been doing through the last couple of years, and I know we've talked about it on and off, but activating additional intersections to improve traffic flow and safety. And what that means is, in the past, we use technology such as loops, which are magnetic loops, the pavement to detect vehicles, or pre-timed intersections. So you're timing the corridor, for instance, Jackson Street. Over the last couple of years, we've been able to, what we call activate those intersections. So we're using, currently we use cameras from a company called Gridsmart, which detects vehicles at the intersection. So it'll keep the main line flowing unless there's a call on the side streets. And what that does is it helps with traffic flow, A. It avoids stopping vehicles when it's not needed. And it also improves safety because if we don't have that, for example, if we don't have vehicle detection, we have pre-timed intersections, we have to put the lights in flash at night. And we have seen over the years that that does increase accident frequency because people either disobey them or they do rolling stops and things like that, and that leads to more crashes. So as we're able to, we try to activate more of those intersections and Scooter and his team have been very active in converting some of those to that technology, especially we try to do that on all the newer intersections. So that's been working really well. We extended the Riverwalk lighting this year. Scooter and his team been active in that. They also worked on the East Ninth and South Main intersection and updating the infrastructure there. They're currently working with our contractor on West Haven and Ninth with the permanent installation of traffic signals there. They also work on the rectangular rapidly flashing beacons. So we're doing the one on Mid Block on Whittle this year. In the past, they've done the ones on the roundabouts. We also have the one on Jocelyn this year. So his team does a great job with those. We don't hire any contractors. We do that all in-house, take care of making sure everything's AD accessible and getting that equipment installed, as well as the bases. And so they've done a really good job with that. Going forward, this, this coming year, we're going to continue, like I said, to work on the intersections with the video detection. We had to move our equipment. We had some over at Sawyer Street, so Scooter is and his team working on moving that out. And they do, I don't think a lot of, I'm sure some of you realize, but not everybody does, that our city electricians also, they work with every city department. So they're active at the museum, they're active at Parks Facility, the library, City Hall, just about any city-owned building. It's, Scooter and his team are helping with various electric projects, as well as coordinating with contractors.
We also.
The new building on Irving, Scooter and his group did a lot of work to get that. We'll get you over there for a tour sometime, but that new storage facility, they did a ton of work to make that operational. And I know the staff inside certainly appreciate that service that Scooter and his folks provide.
We also, just a quick note, we also take care of this, we're actually responsible for the city's communication network, the underground, that's all the fiber, all the tele, you know, all our copper telephones, so. So we take all that. I think Jim kind of hit on that. We, we, you know, getting the old, the old parks building offline and then getting the new fiber communication to the new buildings. So that's also done with our, our very small crew that's doing, does a lot of work, so.
Yep, and he mentioned they work on the streetlights as well.
And on the, with the old bulbs, I'm talking about with street lighting now, red, yellow, green. Of course, the old bulbs give off the heat. And so in the wintertime, it melted, the snow that comes up. And so now we have, without the heat, you got the snow that covers these up. How are we dealing with that issue?
We, there was a big to-do years ago that a lot of places were trying to figure out how to do it. You know, I mean, Milwaukee County was actually thinking about taking their, their plain de-icing equipment out before snowstorms and spraying their signal heads. But we, we found that since we put them in once in a while, depending on what type of snowstorm we get, if we get a wet, a really heavy wet, sleety snow, you know, primarily blowing from one direction, that we will get that, that coverage. So we, we came up with a simple solution. We got extendable paint sticks with a, with a scrub brush. We duct taped to the end of it, so we just go out and brush them out. We've had to do that probably, I would have to say in the last 10 years, we've probably done that maybe six to seven times, so.
Was there going to be a big, big increase in the budget for that then, or?
Yeah, the paint sticks, yeah. But, you know, rather than, you know, rather than send a, you know, send a bucket truck out to every intersection, we just, you know, our overhead signals are, you know, 20 feet, 20 feet from the ground. So it's just easy to send guys in, you know, all four guys in different parts.
There's a lot of overheads. I mean, that's got to be a pain in the.
Well, and again, it's, we, you primarily only see it from one or two directions. So, I mean, if we get a wet, sloppy. I mean, if we get a wet sloppy snowstorm and it primarily blowing in from the west, then we look at the west and the southerly signals the most because those are the ones that generally get caked the most. So, and in the state of Wisconsin, we're required to have three, three, we're required to have a minimum of three signal faces for each direction. So a lot of times you might get one or two of them are, are covered, but maybe the third one isn't quite so bad. So, but like I said, it's been, it's been pretty minimal, the amount of times we've actually had to go out and knock the snow out of them. But, and again, that's, that's really our response to that is if, if we are getting that type of snow, rather try, you know, there, there's newer, there are new signal heads out there now that actually have heaters in them. But you're right back to defeating the purpose of, you know, your, your savings. You might as well go back to incandescent lamps and, and, and just run them. So I would, you know, overall, the, the savings really outweigh the, you know, outweigh the inconvenience of having to go do that. The guys aren't always happy about it, but again, it, it, it's kind of our, our way of, of handling that. So, but.
Any other questions on electric? All right. If not, the last one then for transportation is page one sixty-one, which is our sign division. So as I mentioned, Brian's our, he's our transit maintenance manager, but he also oversees our sign and street painting operation. So wears a couple of different hats. The sign department, this last year, I mean, a lot of what they do is pretty routine. So every year we go out and refresh the, the city's striping. We replace all the signs. We have to do that every 10 years to remain reflectivity as far as like the traffic signs go. They work a lot on the neighborhood signs as well as working with other city departments on any sign needs they have. We do make our signs in-house with basically, if they're metal signs with the vinyl, we can do that. You know, we can't get too fancy, but for the most part, we've been able to do most of the city signs. They also do the bike lanes and the shero markings that we melt into the street. They do that as well. So this, this, this last year, we were able to redo all the city striping again, as well as some of the other major projects. We, with each road reconstruction project, we have to go back and reinstall, relocate the signs as needed, make sure that we're upgrading those as needed as well. So this last year with the new middle school, they were actively involved in reversing the traffic flow, making sure that we got all the signs correct and that they're, meet the MUTCD and that everything's compliant. As well as with the new Wisconsin Street and the other streets, they follow the crew once the road's ready to reopen and go in there and make sure that we get all the signs installed correctly. For 24, again, we'll install the signage and the shares of payment marking on recommended bike routes as well as the restriping is again, and they work on any of those. When you guys pass those ordinances, they're responsible for going out there and making sure the sign's accurate and updating that as well. With the new built school I mentioned and then any other new projects that come as well where we have to review traffic flow or signs. So they do that with, we have two full-time employees and then we hire two seasonals in the summer to kind of assist them so that they can get most of the street paintings done, obviously in the summer. So budget-wise, it's, it's pretty much unchanged other than the regular, you know, personnel and any health or personnel increases as far as wages. Any questions on signs or street painting? All right, perfect. Well, I got five through five of them in less than an hour. So that's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Ames is in the on-deck circle. So if you guys want to just refresh your coffee or anything while we switch over, we can probably just keep going. Are you wait, are waiting anybody, James, or where are you starting with?
Uh, starting with field ops.
Okay.
One of the brakes, you defend your ear. That's good.
Sure.
Off the record.
Sounds even better.
All right, here you go, Jan. Say some more.
Say ship.
I know you've been looking at the...
Yeah, I think it turned out great. And I, I think it hit a lot of...
Uh-oh.
And I, I do like the, the...
Yeah.
Right there, Justin.
Our sunrise.
Good morning.
Then leave us a letter.
The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page.
Sanitation, garbage collection, page one eighty-three of your booklets.
Welcome to school.
Or binders, however you want to refer to it.
Special revenue fund.
Uh, I don't know. Is that the section it's in?
Yeah.
Yeah, special revenue funds.
Can you just maybe do some introductions because we got...
Yeah, we do that, a few new, new faces. For those of you that have been around a little while, you'll remember Justin. Justin's been with the organization for about two years now, almost exactly two years.
Yep.
Coming up in a couple of weeks.
That's true. Yep.
Justin is the field operations manager. And on my right is Eric Moran. He's the new sanitation division manager. What, what, six months, Eric?
Yes.
So yeah, we got a few new faces on our side of the table here. So thanks, Mark. I would, would have jumped right in otherwise. So yeah, so sanitation division's really split between garbage and recycling collection. We'll start with the garbage collection side as I mentioned on page one eighty-three. You know, just a few key points as far as tying to the strategic plan, strengthening our neighborhoods, improving quality of life sections of our strategic plan through the regular collection of refuse from our residential property owners. It should be noted that it is just one, two, and three family residential properties that the city collects from. Four and above do have to get private collection services. And there's some ability for some of those small multifamilies to either opt in or out of our collection as well. That's a decision they have to make annually by sending a letter into the department, I believe by tomorrow, if I remember correctly.
Yes, the 31st.
So that's, that's how we, we've got that set up. You know, like I said, it's residential collection, commercial, industrial is all private contracts. This division is also responsible for the maintenance and management of properties formerly utilized as municipal landfills. Some of you may or may not be aware, there are several former stone quarries in the city that were, in the process of filling, received a lot of municipal solid waste. In particular, Quarry Park, Nap Street Quarry and the former Keenness Paulus Quarries. If you're familiar with the south side, it's kind of that Nap and Seventeenth area, just south of the intersection of Nap and Seventeenth on both the east and west sides, as well as, or I should say just north of Seventeenth on the east and west sides of Nap, and also south of Seventeenth, just east of Nap, there were several quarries, all of which received municipal solid waste probably five, six decades ago. So as that waste continues to decompose, it generates methane. Going back about 30, 40 years, there were some home explosions in the area, which kind of is what really started a lot of the investigations into those old municipal solid waste disposal sites. There are active landfill gas mitigation systems installed around the perimeter of all those sites. So it's a perforated pipe around the perimeter with active suction blowers drawing that gas out of the, out of the ground. So it can't migrate off-site and into the adjacent properties. Sanitation and recycling also continue to be among the highest rated divisions in our annual citizen survey. A few keynotes through the first nine months of the year of this year, January through September, our garbage collection totals are virtually identical to the same timeframe last year, literally within about 60 tons over the course of the first nine months. Yes, Russ?
Timeout. I just want to let everybody know that there's a couple of these special revenue funds pages that we need to give you updates to. We just found this out late in the week. This is one of them. I know if you look at the levy number on page one eighty-four, it's different than the levy summary. So you will be getting updated. The levy summary is right, but the revenue on this page is, will be updated. There's about six or eight funds that we have to update. So sorry to interrupt.
No, that's, that, thank you, thank you, Russ. I hadn't even heard that news from you yet. So.
Yeah, there's a couple of the ones that we found late last week that we have to update. So.
And I was going to mention, I think, go through the expenditure stuff. That'll, you'll set me up better.
I'm sorry, jumping that one.
I know you're sorry. I was like, hell, it's okay.
Well, I wasn't planning on getting in.
Well, landfill costs and stuff, I, that's...
Yep, those are a few of the items that we'll be getting to here a little bit. So as I mentioned, our garbage collection through the first nine months of this year, virtually identical to last year. So that's actually pretty good considering we added a number of properties on the west side with the Town of Algoma Zone C attachments. So starting in March of this year, we added, do you remember about how many properties we added, Eric?
Forty-six to forty-eight.
So.
Like they're in the Town of Algoma or were they?
The, per, per boundary agreement with the Town of Algoma, everything from the center line of Clairville Road East that was still in the town, attached to the city. So that's our boundary agreement with the Town of Algoma, kind of had stages. The first stage was 2008 where everything that was still east of I-41 came in. Then in 2013, it went to, not quite Oakwood Road, I think. And then in 2018, it was kind of in between and out. In 2023, it's to Clairville. So that's the third out of four stages. The fourth stage is 2043, and that's the remainder of the area in the town that's not in the protected area comes into the city. So yeah, so with, with those Zone C attachments, we had to incorporate that into our collection routes. And as I said, even with those additional properties, we're, we're still running virtually the same on our garbage collection for the year. Some of the, the key budgetary impacts, and I think, Mark, this is what you were alluding to, Winnebago County Solid Waste Management Board, which all of our garbage collection gets taken out to Winnebago County Transfer Station, and then they're trucking up to Outagame County as a part of the tri-county agreement with Brown, Outagame, and Winnebago Counties. The Solid Waste Management Board is increasing the tipping fee by $4 per ton. That was after a $4 increase last year as well. So in the last couple of years, we've seen an increase of almost 18% in what we're paying Winnebago County to, to get rid of the garbage that we are, we are collecting.
What's the scope? Just how many tons do we do a year?
Uh, well, through the first nine months of the year, we've been just short of 11,000 tons of garbage. So what does that put us? Probably about 13-ish thousand tons a year.
Thirteen-five.
Four bucks is a big deal.
Yes.
If I remember right, during 2020, 2021, we saw an increase.
During the early stages of COVID, we saw an increase, some increase in garbage, but we saw a significant increase in recycling and trips to yard waste. That, that first year of COVID were record numbers of trips to yard waste, which we'll touch a little bit in recycling. But yes, as people were not in the office and were home more, they're like, I gotta clean this place up a little bit. So yeah, we did see a lot of that during that timeframe. It's, it's come back down now. And as I said, we're, we're running pretty much right on with last year. But yeah, to, to your point, you know, $4, you know, $8 over the last two years is very significant increase. As we have had some conversations with some of the, the commercial private industries, you know, from a construction standpoint, there's a lot of our material that ends up going to Valley Trail Waste Management in Berlin. You know, as we've seen some of these increases, we've had some conversations with them over the years. They're like, they still can't, they couldn't touch it for that because you'd need to set up a transfer station. Otherwise, you know, you know, your trucks are running all the way to Berlin. So they're like, to set up a transfer station operated, they're like, we can't touch it for this rate.
Oh, if you, I just wanted to get into the levy part. I just, because that was a significant increase and I just wanted to, but I want you to set it up. So if you've got more to set that up.
Well, I think that was one of the biggest things. You know, that's a huge increase. You know, and overall, it's the landfill tipping fees, the fuel costs, and cost for managing those old landfill gas mitigation systems that really, you know, that's the difference that we're seeing, where we see increases is because of those items. So I, I've got a couple of other things, but I'll let you roll into that, Mark, because that's, this is a little bit less.
Yeah, that, and that was the, the correction that on page one eighty-four is going to need to be made to match up with page thirty-nine, which is the levy summary. The levy for refuse for garbage collection and disposals going up $170,000 or 10%. And it's the cumulative effect of everything that James has been talking about. These special revenue funds, there's supposed to be revenue, but in a lot of cases, these funds were set up to really help us get around any type of expenditure restraint challenge that we might have because we were so focused on that for so many years. So these funds exist and they're primarily funded with general tax dollars. And this fund, we were able to take some surplus in recent years and feed off of it for a while, but that's no longer the case now. Now with the combination of fuel and, and tipping fees. And then you'll see this in different departments. There's, for example, here, there's a large increase in health insurance. Has nothing to do with the health insurance costs increasing because as Mr. Fitzpatrick pointed out, health insurance has only gone up 3.1%. But we budget for actual people, what type of health insurance they get. Usually, an increase in health insurance usually means that somebody got married and started having kids. That's, so, and when that goes up, we go from a single plan to a dual plan to a family plan. That's, that's just a very natural thing. You'll see some budgets go down because of that. Because somebody leaves, we hire a young person that's single, and then we're back to that, and then they, they start going up again. That's the natural course of things. There's a slight increase in there for this purpose, but that's not the main theme is that fuel, tipping fees are a huge contributor as they're always going to be for our refuse division. And the life of the vehicles, what Uh, and the life of the vehicles, um, what we were talking the other day, Russ, I mean, we're getting out of the refuse trucks, Eric? About seven years.
Yeah, about seven.
Yeah, seven years.
That's the, that's the overall expectation for the entire area we're in, is because of the salt, is seven years.
Yeah, they just wear, they, they just wore down, so we've got to replace those as well, so you'll see with refuse that, uh, yeah, that increase, we had to finally catch up to it. Um, um, it's not, it's just the circumstances catching up with us, and we need to have that fund be solvent. Can I summarize it?
No, I, I think that's about it. We're, you know, we did have, um, you know, one retirement, uh, personnel that was split between garbage and recycling, so, yeah, we've, we saw somebody who was probably on a dual plan out, and somebody was probably on, you know, possibly on a family plan coming in, so, you know, we, that, that's kind of where we're at with some of those. As I get into a few of the other ones, you're gonna see, um, you know, places where, you know, maybe spousal coverage isn't there anymore, so, you know, those staff are picking up on our plan instead of where they might have previously been on a spouse's plan, so there's a little bit of that movement going on. Every, every year this time is, uh, as individuals when we're evaluating our family situation. I think some of the, uh, only other points that I, I really wanted to hit on with garbage. Um, we did have some, uh, some equipment issues, uh, with the landfill gas mitigation system this year. Um, you know, you just got done hearing from Jim and Scooter, you know, Scooter talked about how they help everybody, all the other departments, well, they helped this out as well, cause when we have electrical issues or we have to replace motors on those blower systems, it's Scooter and his team that are out there doing that electrical work for us. So we did have a motor failure on one of those blower systems. Worked with our consultant, the original motor was a, a special order item, so it took a little while for Scooter to, to get it in. Uh, during the course of that, we, you know, our consultant was out there with a temporary blower, keeping that, uh, those systems operational and drawing that, uh, gas out. Uh, but also through the course of that, we did also manage to identify a non-special order motor that completely fits our application, so. And we did, uh, did have some good come out of that. A couple of other things, you know, that, that Eric has been experiencing, you know, um, our preventative maintenance, uh, on a lot of the equipments. We're trying to do more of that with our, with the sanitation operators, uh, just because of the, you know, ever-increasing workload that we're seeing in the central garage. Uh, so their staff are spending a, a little more time every day trying to do some of those preventative maintenance items. Uh, and it's gonna continue to be a challenge as the city continues to grow, and, and we have to evaluate our routes and, you know, how are we able to continue to, to meet the demands, if you will, of our residential customers and, and get that garbage picked up every week? So with that, if there's any other additional questions on garbage, otherwise seeing none, we'll move into recycling, which is, uh, just a few pages earlier, page one seventy-seven. Uh, a- as with garbage collection, recycling division, uh, in the strategic plan, fits into strengthening neighborhoods and improving quality of life through regular collection of recycling materials, and also educating our residents and property owners on proper recycling to reduce the amount of waste that goes to the landfill. I think that's one key point that, that I really want to, uh, stress on. You know, this division as a whole, garbage and recycling is ten, eleven people? Uh, ten, ten staff, including yourself, correct?
Correct.
Um, you know, between our lead worker and Eric, they do a lot of work with our, our school system and a lot of education. It continues with the school system, you know, as, as we may recall, you know, when recycling first became a, a big item, you know, thirty years ago, it really started in the schools, and the kids taking that message home to the parents. And we continue to do that, uh, through these educational programs. You know, I, I know the high schools reach out regularly, hey, you know, we've got this coming up, can we have you guys come in and do some information education with us? You know, so that is a, a big part of what Eric and, and the lead operator, in particular, the two of them, do with working with the schools. The state of Wisconsin continues to provide partial reimbursement for the recycling division costs. That reimbursement comes through the, uh, collection of landfill tipping fees, so every ton of garbage that goes to a landfill has a fee that goes to feed the recycling pr- program at the state of Wisconsin, which then the state turns around and helps the municipalities fund our recycling program. Yard waste drop-off site is operated and managed by the recycling division, and as I mentioned before, recycling and garbage both continue to be some of the highest rated divisions in the o- organization. Yard waste, uh, drop-off this year has seen very consistent usage. Uh, total number of visits between this year and last year through the first nine months, down very slightly, but not much, and, um, Ms. Erickson, as you pointed out, twenty twenty, we saw record usage because people were getting out and cleaning up the yards. Uh, again, through the first nine months of this year, our recycling material collection has been virtually identical to last year. We're seeing very, very similar collection, both with recycling and garbage, even as we've incorporated those Town of Algoma attachments. Uh, one thing with the recycling material that's also taken out to the transfer station on Jackson and County Y. In this particular case, the Winnebago County Solid Management, Solid Waste Management Board is holding their fee for handling recycling at five dollars a ton, so no increase there. Uh, as far as recycling commodities go, that's a very volatile market. Uh, you know, it will be significantly up one year and then down the next, just due to whatever's going on internationally. Uh, as an example, in twenty twenty-two, we received over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars back from Winnebago County Solid Waste from the sale of recycling commodities. This year, it was under twenty thousand. So it is an extraordinarily volatile market. Uh, typically, one of the things we see that as tensions increase between the US and China, those va- uh, those values will plummet, uh, because that is one place that a lot of recycling commodities do end up going at this point in time, so. That's one of the things you'll see internationally as tensions increase, those mar- uh, those commodity sales plum- plummet. As those tensions ease and that material gets taken, then we'll see those come up, so it is extraordinarily volatile as any commodities market is. And again, as we mentioned with the, uh, preventative maintenance and the workload increases that we continue to see in the garage, you know, the recycling staff are doing the same as garbage collection and trying to get some of that preventative maintenance work done on their own vehicles so that we don't have to, uh, burden our limited staff in the garage with some of that work. Um, any questions on recycling? All right, with that, uh, thank you, Eric, you can, move off and we'll get, uh. Travis, yep, Travis is back there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So. I think most everybody remembers Travis. Travis's face isn't as new as Eric's. All right, so we'll start with, uh.
A little bit more weathered.
We'll start with the, uh, the fleet management, uh, internal service fund on page four twenty-nine, so at the back of the book. Russ, were the, the books that council had, were those updated to the?
Hmm?
Okay.
I saw one of the changes that Denise was doing this morning when you came in.
Okay.
Or when they came in.
So, yeah, so you'll see that, um, that output looks a little bit differently. Uh, the, the first printout had the two internal service funds kind of combined, and we were struggling a little bit to make the numbers work in our head, so we asked them to try to separate that for us. Uh, so the, the fleet management internal service fund, um, as far as our strategic plan goes, it falls into the improve and maintain our infrastructure and enhance the effectiveness of government sections, uh, through the primary focus of maintaining vehicles and equipment, not only for the Department of Public Works, but for several other departments as well. Uh, fleet management also manages all of the fuels, so diesel, unleaded, compressed natural gas, for the entire city fleet with the exception of the transit buses. Uh, due to the, uh, the federal funding on those, they have their own fueling system, so as not to get confused, uh, I think, with, uh, the rest of the city fleet. Uh, fuel costs are allocated or charged back to the appropriate expense accounts, uh, in all of the departments based on what equipment is being fueled. So the, uh, the fueling system is what a little like key fob that they have to scan at the pump, and that ta- tells the computer system, okay, this is truck eight oh one that's coming to get fuel, this is a water truck, so this is where that goes. So that, um, Travis and his team can run those reports and make sure that those are getting charged back appropriately. On average, as an organization, we are utilizing between eighty-five thousand and ninety-five thousand gallons of unleaded fuel on an annual basis, between a hundred and thirty thousand and a hundred and forty-five thousand gallons of diesel fuel per year, and around ten thousand gallons of compressed natural gas per year, so very significant fuel usage as an organization, but gotta remember, that is our entire organization. So you think of police, fire, our public works trucks, we're all getting fuel through that same fuel island, as are all of the other vehicles. Obviously, the exception with the compressed natural gas vehicles, they're fueling at the local Quick Trips, cause we do not have a compressed natural gas fuel system on site.
What kind of savings do we get as a city buying in such bulk versus getting it at Quick Trip?
Uh, the biggest savings is taxes. You know, on average, uh, when those prices, cause the purchasing division will go out to solicit quotes from, you know, the local fuel supplier, so the Gero Oil, uh, Gero's one of the biggest ones, there's a new one. There's about three or four that usually, uh, quote. On average, I see probably fifty to seventy cents a gallon difference between what the prices at the pump are versus what we're getting. What was the most, do you remember the most recent, uh, diesel purchase?
The most recent diesel purchase was three sixteen a gallon.
And the cheapest diesel at the pump right now in town is three ninety-nine. Um, in town, you know, it's more like four thirty-nine, but like Quick Trip on forty-four, Plainview Truck Stop and Quick Trip on Green Valley Road are at three ninety-nine. I know that because I have a diesel truck, so I watch it closely. So, yeah, three sixteen versus three ninety-nine, so that's eighty, eighty-three cents a gallon difference on diesel, and I don't watch unleaded, where we been on unleaded?
We just went out for a quote yesterday, uh, it was, um, two twenty-seven.
Two twenty.
Excuse me, two seventy-eight.
Oh, two seventy-eight, and I think at the pump is, what, about three fifteen to three twenty? So forty-five, fifty cents a gallon there. So it i- it is very significant versus, you know, going to the pump and buying it at retail.
There's also some time savings I've seen over the years. I mean, methodically, our folks can, can come in at the end of the day, go to the fuel station, get it fueled up, sometimes drive through the drive-through and get the vehicle washed. It's back in the bay, it's clean, it's fueled, it's ready to go the next day. There's not the, well, let's stop over at the, you know, whatever gas station, Quick Trip, say, is the most convenient, or we have a contract with them. This keeps it very methodical for our folks to, to get in and out in the morning, and getting them in and out, uh, and back very efficiently is probably another motivation.
Right. Yeah, cause I think from a, a garbage standpoint, you know, they pretty much end their day at Quick Trip. Garbage, uh, garbage had the CNG vehicles, yeah, so they pretty much end their day at, at Quick Trip filling up their trucks. And it's just the two, it's, uh, South Washburn and Green Valley Road, I believe, are the only ones that have CNG, so. On the far outreaches of the city versus, you know, you're coming back into, you know, into the garage where you're gonna be parking your truck anyhow and fueling up, so. There is, I would say, probably a good twenty to thirty minutes of savings anytime you gotta fill a truck up versus having to run to one of those periphery locations. Uh, some of the, uh, key accomplishments, we, we continue to have our, our staff go through a lot of training with, uh, the Pierce Fire Apparatus and getting their emergency vehicle technician certifications. As council may recall, it was, was it three years ago, four years ago?
It was about two thousand nineteen when we started.
Okay, so about four years ago, we transitioned the maintenance of the fire department fleet, uh, from their one-man operation at Station Fifteen. We brought that, uh, technician over to the garage and we started maintaining their fleet. Um, certainly, it's been a significant undertaking as, you know, I'm sure the, uh, the fire department chief will tell you, you know, they're, they're, a lot of catch-up that, uh, they were behind on, that we're continuing to still work on getting caught up on. Uh, there are some things that, uh, you know, still have to get, uh, sent out, but not nearly to the extreme that, uh, they were doing, uh, prior, so. Uh, all in all, it's been, uh, it's been working out very well. It's certainly has, uh, taxed our, our technicians ability, but, uh, they're all stepping up and, oh, most of them have at least some level of certification on EBT, right?
Correct.
So they're all working on getting their certifications, and I know just a couple of weeks ago, I saw they were out, I think, doing some pump testing behind the building as well.
Yep.
Uh, with this internal service fund, you know, this, this was a change that was made a couple of years ago. Uh, splitting this off of, uh, the general fund portion of the central garage budget, which we'll touch on next. Um, all of the, you know, prior to this split, it was really, that central garage budget was responsible for accounting for all of the fuel costs and all of the maintenance costs of the entire organization in, in one budget. You know, so versus all of the bu- all of the various budgets, you know, being responsible for their own maintenance and fuel, so. That was a shift that occurred two, two, three years ago.
Mm-hmm.
Um, with the, with this particular fund. So all of the costs of the fleet management are allocated or charged back to the appropriate expense accounts. Again, like I mentioned with the fuel, if it's truck eight oh one, that cost is getting, you know, charged back to the water utility. If it's truck three eighty-nine, it's getting charged back to engineering division. Overall cost of diesel and unleaded is highly volatile, depending on the commodities cost, you know. We talked a bit about commodities and recycling, but, you know, fuel is, you know, probably the one commodity we all recognize the most, and it is a very volatile market, and, you know, the, the cost fluctuations on fuel are nothing we have any control over. You know, it could be, you know, a hurricane in the Gulf, or, you know, some other civil unrest in the world could drive those, uh, prices all over the place. Uh, with continued growth of the city fleet and aging of the fleet, uh, workload and fleet maintenance continues to increase. One of the biggest challenges that we've been experiencing is our supply chain issues. Uh, you know, it's taking, depending on the type of equipment, two to three years from the date we order new equipment to getting it in-house. That means it's two to three more years of maintenance on that equipment in order to keep it roadworthy and operational, and a- as we all know, the last two to three years of a vehicle are the most expensive to take care of that vehicle. Um, so that has certainly been an ongoing challenge with our fleet maintenance is, you know, just because we haven't been able to get those replacement vehicles in in a timely manner, so they're having to try to keep them going a lot longer. Um, and as of right now, uh, we do have one open position that's been open for several months, and we're just, we're struggling to try to get that position filled. Any questions on that?
Which position is that?
Uh, it's a preventative maintenance technician. Any other, any questions on that? All right, then we'll, we'll flip to the, uh, the general fund portion of the central garage budget, which is on page one thirty-seven. Uh, again, you know, the primary focus from the strategic plan is in improving and maintaining our infrastructure with the, uh, taking care of the, the fleet. Uh, a- as you look at the personnel, there's one, one personnel position left in this, uh, particular budget, that's Travis, uh, sitting next to me here, and one of the primary reasons there is, you know, one of the biggest things that Travis's position does is help, uh, with the writing of specifications for vehicle purchases across the entire organization for all the equipment that's in the, uh, the capital improvement program, so. If it's a vehicle or another piece of equipment like that, that's wheels, or sometimes not with tracks, um, Travis is, uh, working with those departments to work on getting the specifications written, bless you. And then working with purchasing on soliciting quotes for that equipment, so. Uh, that in and of itself is almost a full-time job, I think, right, Travis? Uh, some key accomplishments, you know, we're continuing to, uh, to work towards the, uh, on the implementation of the asset management, uh, module and e- uh, the Tyler ERP software, and I believe we've just recently finished up all the, uh, equipment solicitations for the twenty-three CIP, right?
Uh, there's a couple of items yet we're still working on for twenty-two, um, and we've got just a very bare minimum stuff in twenty-three, yeah, just some equipment packages for the vehicles.
So, almost got all of that stuff, uh, on order. And as we mentioned, you know, Travis's position is the one that's left in this particular one due to the, uh, And as we mentioned, you know, Travis's position is the one that's left in this particular one due to the, uh, the impact across the entire organization that that position has. Any questions? All right, thank you Travis.
Thank you all, thank you.
Uh, we got Andy behind us, so, uh, we're gonna flip back to the Internal Service Fund section on four twenty-nine as, uh, Andy Hints, uh, one of our Street Division Supervisors comes forward. So one of the changes that was made in the twenty-twenty-three operations budget, uh, was creating the Internal Service Fund for the Street Division or the Field Operations Internal Service Fund is, as we refer to it. Um, and really, one of the biggest reasons that that transition was made was, um, it's to really try and help accounting for all of the work that this division does to support everyone else. Um, there is a lot of work done by this division to support the utilities. Prior to this transition, the, the utilities were directly paying for some of the positions that were in Streets Division, but it wasn't, I don't think it, it wasn't accurately capturing some of those, uh, costs. So with the implementation of the asset management, uh, software and the ability to have the work orders to track that, um, we're still working through, I think, a few chargeback, uh, hiccups, but I know Justin and Haley have been working a lot this last year on the, on getting the chargebacks ironed out, so, uh, kinda streamlining that work so that it's, it's a more accurate accounting of where the work is being done. Uh, as far as tying into our strategic plan, improving and maintaining our infrastructure, that, that is what this, uh, fund does. They take care of not only the roads, so patching, uh, doing some pavement patching, doing concrete patching, snow plowing, crack filling, but they also are televising and cleaning all of our storm sewers and sanitary sewers. Uh, they are maintaining some of the areas around our stormwater detention basins. You know, not the native vegetation itself, but all the areas up around the top that are getting mowed regularly. Uh, they're also responsible for clearing the sidewalks around all of those properties. So, you know, most of our de- larger detention basins, you know, in the city, they have sidewalk next to them. Just like everybody else, we've gotta get that sidewalk shoveled within twenty-four hours of the, the snow ending. So not only do they gotta plow all the streets, but then they also gotta have a crew out there to clear all those sidewalks that we've gotta get cleared. So, you know, maintaining our infrastructure is what this fund does. Um, we talked a little bit about how they, they provide services across the organization. Uh, just a few examples, community development, uh, you know, as the RDA acquires properties that they need to demolish, it's actually our street, uh, crews that do that demolition for them. Uh, it, you know, we've had a few that, you know, as we've looked at them, are just a little too challenging or maybe too close with neighboring properties where we, we just don't feel comfortable doing it. So then we'll work to get a contractor, but I would say more than nine out of ten times, it's our crews that are, you know, probably more like ninety-five out of a hundred, i- it's our crew that's doing that work. Um, you know, one of the biggest ones I think we ever took on was, uh, the former Buckstaff property and-
Right, and we, uh, and we, uh, we worked in conjunction with a third party on that project also.
Yeah, we rented a bunch of equipment and-
So a lot of those, uh, projects, a lot of those, uh, raising of the buildings, um, obviously, we, you know, from pavements all the way up, you know, getting, uh, in touch with the utilities, um, basically from beginning to end, all the way to the restoration, uh, you know, from putting grass seed down and making, you know, you know, an area that looks nice, we, we take care of all that. And what James was saying, when we do have a, a building, let's say, or a structure that, uh, maybe we need some bigger equipment and if we maybe don't have the time, uh, to rent and do, um, then we, uh, uh, work with, uh, you know, that third-party contractor to do whatever we can.
We've had a few instances where the fire department has called us up and asked us to bring out equipment and help them as well. Um, you know, one that comes to mind was the, the bar on the corner of Main and Irving.
Oh, Mabel Murphy's?
Mabel's, you know, the, you know, got a call from the fire chief about, you know, four thirty, five o'clock in the morning, like, hey, we're doing everything we can, but the roof is still intact and the roof is doing its job keeping water out, so we can't get water into the structure. Can you send somebody over with a backhoe and help us poke a few holes in this thing? So, um, you know, we get calls like that. There was the house fire on Jackson Street, um, you know, in the last-
I was on a Sunday.
Yeah.
It was on a Sunday and, uh, most of these things don't happen, you know, at seven o'clock in the morning where everybody's, you know, ready to go. Uh, normally, it's after-hours around the weekends, but, uh, um, you know, obviously, the crew is very responsive. But, uh, being that we've had, uh, such a good working relationship with all, all the departments throughout the city, um, we were able to, uh, do what we needed and, uh, to help the fire department secure that site.
So a few of the other things that this division does from a, a park standpoint, they help with a lot of paving. Uh, paving that takes place in the, the cemetery, uh, as well as other locations, uh, you know, we have an asphalt paving machine. Uh, so we, we do a lot of that work. Uh, with the water utility, uh, this division does all the asphalt patching for water main breaks. So every, all the breaks that we get over the course of the winter time, you know, this, this crew will go out and fix those asphalt streets. The concrete ones, our sidewalk rehab contractor, that gets rolled into them for doing the concrete patching. Because these guys got a lot of other work they gotta do, we just, we can't have them doing all of it. Uh, as I mentioned, with the sewer and stormwater utility, televising and maintaining all of those sewers and manholes, you know, if a casting is sinking, you know, you drive over, tootum, tootum, well, these are the guys that are gonna be going out and fixing it as well. Um, and we mentioned, uh, some of the maintenance of our regional stormwater management practices, but, you know, the other things, street sweeping and inlet cleaning. You know, as we wind down with leaf collection, they'll be out sucking all the debris and stuff out of the inlets to keep them from freezing over the winter time, so we don't have, you know, if we get a, a melt in the middle of winter, you know, we don't have stuff frozen in them so that the system can drain. A few of our key accomplishments, the walking trail within Menominee Park Zoo was paved by this crew. Um, you know, Scooter men- or Jim Collins mentioned, you know, moving stuff out of the Sawyer Street Building. It was our crew that helped pave a, a storage pad on the backside of Electrical Division. So Electrical could move the stuff that they had at the Sawyer Street, uh, building stored, uh, over to behind their site. So we worked with a contractor on, to get the curbing around it, uh, just to free up some additional time. But then it was these crews that paved the actual pad itself so that Scooter could start moving his stuff over. Uh, continued implementation of the EAM software and, and we talked about the demolition projects. Uh, some of the challenges and impacts that we're having with this division, uh, staffing continues to be a challenge and has been for the last ye- couple of years now. You know, we entered this year short, about four, four equipment operators. Um, as winter season came to an end, we had a few leave, go back maybe to the private construction sector. Um, you know, so we peaked up around seven vacancies in the spring and we're currently at four right now. Uh, but we do have a planned retirement in January as well, so, you know, that will start opening up some more. So that has continued to be a struggle with this particular division over the last couple of years. Any questions? Yeah, it is, and that's, that's something that I'm, I would say maybe five or six years ago, we made some changes to the municipal code so that we don't have to bring every single time we wanna do stuff with staff, um, to the council. We made some changes where, in particular with transportation and public works, because, um, you know, with Mr. Collins before me, you know, doing like the, the paint striping or the street work, uh, the signage, uh, lighting, some of those things. You know, to do some of that stuff in-house versus having to contract it up, we did have to make some changes to the code that, that give Mr. Collins and I the authority to make the decision, hey, this is gonna be cost-effective. And, you know, as we mentioned, there are some of these guys say, look, we don't wanna, you know, that, that building next to it's only two feet away, we don't wanna be doing this one. You know, so we, we do take that into account. Yes?
I don't know if this is more of a you or a Fitzie, but do you feel like you guys have a good plan to fill and retain those spots you've been having trouble with or? He just walked out.
Of course he just walked out, he knew you were gonna ask him.
Yeah. It, it's a challenge, I mean, here's one of the areas where we compete with the private sector.
Sure.
And, you know, we've seen people leave, some people come back and say, you know, I wish I hadn't left. Um, other people say, I, I prefer the private sector or the pay is, the private sector is more responsive to the swings in pay. So if, if, if it goes up quickly, we can't keep up with that. Um, if it goes the other way, um, people tend to go towards us, but, uh, it, it varies. But filling these positions has, has remained a challenge, e- especially in recent years. And I know that's something that, that Andy and Justin wrestle with all the time, so I, I-
Are they usually cited pay or is it working hours or is it?
Pay's often cited, but I don't think that's the only factor. I know that they, Justin and Andy have probably heard pay is the issue. But, you know, we've done other interviews and it, there's other elements as well, and so we try to temper that. But we did have to, a couple of years ago, before we did the wager, before we did the wage study, we actually had to do theirs before anybody else's because it was so bad, we, we were so out of the market. Um, I think it's still cited, Justin, Andy, would you say some people still cited? I mean, this is, it's a very, I, I'm asking them a very awkward question because that's something they wrestle with all the time, but it's still cited.
I would, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I, I would say that it's cited, but I definitely would, uh, say that, uh, we can't just put all the eggs in that, that wire. I think that would be misleading. Um, I would say, um, all communities are probably struggling with this. This is not an Oshkosh problem, this is a municipal issue that is throughout the state. I, there was a piece on the news about Green Bay just the other day. So I, is it a contributing factor? Yes, and obviously, it needs to be continued to be looked at, but, um, it's a very competitive market. There are things that the private sector is able to offer to employees that we're not able to, you know, there's just a lot of those. So, um, yeah, the easy answer is to just to say it's money. Well, if it was just that easy to throw money at everything, you can fix it with that, and that's really not the case. So, uh, it is cited, but, uh, um, there are other factors. And I, I would say to answer more to your question, uh, do you feel that there's a good plan in place? I don't wanna, you know, take time near from, from James here, but I would say that they work very, very well and very, very diligently to explore options to what we can and can't do. I know that's, that's something that we've talked about over the last couple of years. And every time that we're working with our HR division, I mean, it's, it doesn't fall on deaf ears.
Because obviously, it's not my business to know what the plan is, I just wanna know that you guys feel good with it.
At, at the end of the day, yeah, we're, we're, we're doing the best we can, you know, with, as, as City Manager indicated, you know, we, the private sector has much, uh, much more ability to, to be more reactive. Um, but, you know, at the end of the day, I think there are, there are some good things that, you know, we as a municipal organization have to offer. It's just, you know, do people recognize it? Um, and that's where, you know, we've gotta work on that a little bit more. All right, well, we'll flip over to the, uh, the general fund portion of Street Division on page one thirty-one. Um, you know, just like with the Internal Service Fund, it's, you know, maintaining and improving our infrastructure. We, we mentioned, you know, or I mentioned earlier, having an asphalt paver, you know, one of, one of the key projects, you know, we have some asphalt streets. We budget to do an asphalt overlay program. Uh, work this year was out on Riff Road on the far northwest side of the city. Uh, it's a stretch of road that, as we've had some growth in that area, you know, we have received some, some calls over the years. And, uh, I think to do the whole thing was a little bit more than we had in the budget, so, you know, we did so, as much of it as we could this year. And, you know, we'll evaluate the rest of that along with some of the other needs that we might have, uh, going forward for next year's program. Uh, one of the biggest, uh, items, uh, from an expense standpoint remaining here is, uh, road salt, sodium chloride. Um, extremely weather dependent. Um, you know, what we have in the budget right now is, you know, we've, we, we purchase our road salt through a cooperative contract with the Wisconsin Department of Transportation. You know, they do a bid statewide and all the municipalities that want in. I believe in March or April, we've gotta tell them what our early fill in the fall, what we're guaranteeing we'll buy throughout the course of the winter. Um, you know, so we're guessing in March and April, when we're still not done using salt from the previous contract, what we're gonna try to use on the next one. Uh, but it is so weather dependent, you know, if we get two or three major events versus getting a couple of inches every three days, very, very different usage numbers. You know, those, those numerous small events are gonna use a lot more salt than one or two large events will. And we mentioned the asphalt overlay, you know, previously, it was often referred to as the, the cold mix asphalt overlay. Um, we haven't done cold mix in a number of years just because hot mixes, one, lasts longer, two, it's cheaper now than cold mixes. So, um, you know, it's generally been done with hot mix asphalt, uh, you know, but those are things we look at on an annual basis as we're, we're looking into that program.
This may be a Russ question, what's going on with the pay? Page one thirty-four on this.
What, one of the things that we're doing is, previously, the entirety of the Field Operations Manager was budgeted in Street Division. So it was not taking into account all the work that Justin's position and Justin does for garbage, for recycling, for central garage and for streets. So that particular position has been split to more accurately really affect the work that is being done across all of the divisions and not just in Street Division.
This is basically what we can't charge out, that, all that's left here is what can't get charged out. It's the, what the general taxpayer pays for, so Justin's, everything else, if Justin can charge it out, he charges it out. It's just how we've done with the accounting. So it's kind of a combination, I, I know Justin and Haley in the back, Haley's been back there for the last two hours, but Haley, uh, and her staff have been working very closely with Justin to get this fund, uh, to get these accounts down with the central garage and, uh, Streets Division. We have a, a separate fund that we can charge out for, that everything gets charged to, but what's left, this is pretty much people that do snow plowing, right Andy?
No, tho- those staff are in the Internal Service Fund, this is just the upper management staff that's-
But the, but down, you got the inter-fund charges, so they get charged.
Yes, yes.
They get charged for it, but it's, so it's not in personnel, it's in the inter-fund charges now. And that's just how it, it gets accounted for now.
So were you looking at the overall reduction in personnel costs?
Well, I just noticed that personnel positions down less than one, but if you look at the regular pay, it goes from one point three million to a hundred and seventy thousand, I mean, that's-
Yeah, yeah, the one point three down to the one seventy, that's the Internal Service Fund changes. Um, and then the immediate, you know, going from, you know, the twenty-three budget to the, you know, the twenty-four budget going down from one seventy to about, you know, one ten, that's the, the change in splitting up, uh, Justin's position across all of the divisions.
I appreciate the questions, Mike, because I was asking these same questions. There's, there's a, they're still working through the whole process, but I think they've got it down now. At least that's what Haley and Justin have told me, so I'm trusting them. They've worked really hard on getting this done, um, so that the Internal Service Fund can charge out to everything else so that all that remains here is pretty much, it's all, it's mostly in the inter-fund charges, but it's the street repairs we do and the snow plowing we do. Um, and everything else gets charged out so that the utilities pay their fair share, uh, the other funds pay their fair share.
And with the splitting of that position, it's very similar, you know, if you look back, uh, you know, a few years in the budget, you'll see there was a change for even how my position was accounted for. Previously, it showed up whole in one, uh, budget, but then partial in a whole bunch of others because it was, you know, it was, if you went through the book and added up the position, there was almost two of the position because of how it was getting charged up. So we changed it, so instead of doing all those chargebacks, it's just, you know, the, the fractions of the time is just directly charged that way.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
You can ask them again next year too, Mike, make sure it's all done. I'm gonna keep looking at it, they, I've been teasing them about this, but I've, they've been putting a lot of work into this and I-
But fair to say, just to follow up here, fair to say that the personnel costs and the personnel positions are now aligned?
Yes, yes.
They're better stated, they better be.
All right, any other questions with that? All right, well, thank you Andy, thank you Justin.
Thank you all, I appreciate it, yep.
Mark, what time did you have scheduled for a break?
Uh, we were gonna do it at ten o'clock, or ten fifteen, I believe, but if you're at that transition point-
I think it's a good point, but, you know, before we go into utilities, if you wanna take a, a quick break and then-
Or make a natural-
Yeah, then we'll start bringing the utility staff up.
And Jason can get ready.
Sounds good, brother, ten-
Ten fifteen.
Ten fifteen minute break?
Ten.
The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on-demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh- Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly.
Right now on page 396. I've got with me, I think, pretty much everybody probably knows Steve and Jason Ellis, Water Utilities Operations Manager. I think last year this time, you were just starting in the position and one week...
Just over a year now.
Yep, so Jason's just over a year into that position. So 396. So starting with, we'll start with Water Utility as we move through the utilities. Water Utility Services tie into the strategic plan and supporting economic development, improving and maintaining infrastructure, and strengthening our neighborhoods through their primary mission to protect public health and safety by providing safe water to drink and adequate supply for industry and fire demands. Some of our key accomplishments this year, we've continued with the residential cross connection control and water service material inspections and survey. Both programs are required by DNR. Steve, I believe you said we were close, but maybe running a little bit short on our cross connection surveys so far this year?
Yeah, it looks like we're going to end up a few, possibly up to 500 short of what the DNR set as our target goal for completing this year. So we just really need to try to get a better cooperation and response to people getting appointments scheduled and letting staff in to get those inspections done. We've started an outreach program. We're going to continue to get that to ramp up.
Yeah, I think...
I was just going to ask, are the communities struggling to meet their quota from the DNR? Or is that an Oshkosh issue or not?
I don't know.
I don't know if you...
Yeah, I don't know if you've heard anything from Ryan at all. Ryan would probably know, but unfortunately he's still coming back from a vacation, so... You know, you mentioned the information campaign, Steve, kind of rolls into the next. You know, we've continued our Get the Lead Out campaign. We brought our departmental communications consultant on board to help us with a very extensive information education campaign throughout all of the residents. I think, you know, you've certainly probably seen it on social with some of the comments about where ads are. It is a very targeted advertising campaign. So you know, our communications consultant, as they're going to some of these advertising companies, they say, you know, all right, you know, people that are in, you know, these ZIP codes should, you know, see this ad. And you know, it's amazing just how narrowed down, you know, some of those campaigns can be based on the metrics and the data analysis that's out there in the cloud.
I do have a question on that program. When you guys come in and you do the inspection to kind of see if it's a left lateral and other issues that are kind of going on in the, is that...
The cross connection.
Yeah. So I guess I've had people ask if there's, if they let you guys come to the house and you guys see issues, do you like mandate that they make those repairs even if they don't? if they didn't want to do them, or I guess how is that? I think some people are worried they're going to get like a bunch of other deals besides just the lead.
Yeah, with the lead service inspection, you know, there is no mandate to replace it. Where the mandate comes in, and this is coming down from federal and state, is if there's any work done to the lateral, then both the public and private side have to be replaced. But if there's no work being done, then no, there is no mandate to do anything. And as far as the cross connection, cross connection, the residential program is concerned, quite honestly, the biggest thing we're seeing is a lack of backflow preventers on, you know, outside or, you know, spigots in the basement. And if that is the only issue, you know, our staff are providing, you know, just screw on vacuum breakers, you can screw on your faucets in the basement and outside. But I think Ryan has said, well over 90% of what they see is just a lack of a vacuum breaker on those. And they're literally, it's just a little thing this big that you screw on the spigot and it then, you know, as you attach a hose or anything, it doesn't let that water backflow. And we're providing them.
Sure. To date on the residential, I believe that is the only defect we have found to date on any of the residencies is the vacuum breakers. So, the residential ones are highly unlikely to have any additional cost. Commercial signs, we've had other, there's been some issues with those and those have needed correction.
Sure. All right. You know, certainly if you, as you have any questions, you know, as we go through this, just, you know, stop us and let us know. You know, we mentioned, you know, we brought our communications consultant onboard, you know, to really help with this campaign. One of the other things is, Water Utility staff have been at several community events providing information to anyone willing to speak with them. I think one of the biggest ones is, they've been to almost every farmer's market, or how often do they go to the farmer's market, Jason?
At least twice a month, I think over the summer.
Twice a month or twice a year?
I know, they have the booth set up at the farmer's market very regularly. They work with a number of other neighborhood associations, some of the civic groups, and some of the churches they've worked with to provide information as well. So, we've got a couple of staff that have been doing that very regularly. We've also started doing PFOS sampling of our treated drinking water. We talked about it about this time last year, but federal EPA's Unregulated Contaminant Monitoring Rule, or UCMR, version number five, included a requirement for doing PFOS sampling, so we started that about this time last year. We've continued working on the Clearwell replacement project. I think, you know, council is quite aware of the work that's been going on with that. One of the big things that we've, in an effort to try to improve our reach and through our communications consultant, we've had a number of our informational documents translated both into Spanish and Hmong, so that our staff that are going to these community events can have multiple versions. These versions are available on our website as well. Again, trying to get that information to, you know, some of our non-English speaking residents, because it can be hard to have them, especially a technical document, to have somebody else try to translate it for them. So, some of those, we've been targeting key documents and we're continuing to expand across the entire department, the number of documents that we're getting translated and put out on our website. But we are trying to reach some of those members of our community that we really haven't been able to reach because we didn't have documents that they could understand. So, that's been one of our key targets this year, is trying to expand that reach. Some of the overall budgetary challenges, you know, costs related to water main and service breaks, you know, is on the public side extraordinarily weather dependent. You know, winter of '13 and '14, so 10 years ago, we had an extremely cold winter and it led to just a lot of breaks. I think Ryan's staff were out almost daily working on breaks for much of that winter. More mild winters, you know, we don't see nearly as many, so it is very weather dependent. Influent water quality from Lake Winnebago has a significant impact on our water treatment costs. You know, chemical usage as well as the sanitary service fees, you know, because all the stuff we take out of the Lake Winnebago water to make it drinkable gets discharged back into the sanitary sewer to get treated and removed before it goes back into the lake. One of the biggest things impacting that, besides the water quality, we've just seen skyrocketing chemical costs over the last two years. Chlorine in particular has more than quadrupled, you know, probably even closer to five times the cost that it was two years ago. Chlorine is not our primary disinfectant at water filtration, but as we get into the wastewater side of things, that is our primary disinfection on the wastewater side. So, we've just seen skyrocketing chemical costs on both water and wastewater side for treating those. Another one of the challenges that we've seen over the last couple of years is, you know, just a significant increase in regulatory requirements that ultimately lead to additional resources being necessary whenever possible. You know, federal and state governments are continuing to tighten the lead service line replacement requirements. Just this past week, we received some information from the state regarding the next round of lead service line replacements and, you know, they've backed off a little bit on some of their early requirements, but now, you know, the EPA is really pushing a 90-day requirement to get, you know, both sides done once one side is replaced. So, we're going to have to continue to work with those agencies and see if that is where they're at. We're going to have to make some code changes, because our municipal code is at 180 days right now, a requirement. And that's going to particularly pose a challenge in the wintertime. You know, if a service breaks in December, 90 days we'd generally fear in March, then maybe by March, things are starting to thaw enough that you can get it done, but it's not always likely. So, you know, that's where, you know, when we set up the municipal code at 180 days, it was really trying to take those winter challenges into account and the agencies are really tightening down on us on that now and pushing us towards a 90-day. And previously, the DNR had been looking at a 45-day requirement and, you know, it's just not even possible in the wintertime. A lot of our residents that are trying to get their private side lead services replaced, they can't even get a contractor to call them back in a couple of months. You know, so it's, it is some challenges that we've been seeing from the regulatory side. And, you know, we talked a little bit about the lead service database, you know, that's a requirement that we've got to have up and running by about this time next year, you know, kind of the end of third quarter of 2024. We've got that public-facing dashboard out there and, you know, that's going to really drive what the agencies decide to mandate us as far as service line replacements go. So, that's why this big informational campaign is out there for, you know, trying to get that service line database established so we can, the smaller we can make that unknown number, the lower our annual target's going to be for replacement from the regulatory agencies.
Which, right now, 3% of the unknown or known lead. So, I mean, we're sitting at about 7,000 right now, unknown.
Unknown.
So.
Plus the several thousand lead.
3% would be about, you know, 200-ish replacements a year, and our current staff can realistically do, I think, about 75.
It's closer to 300 by the time you factor in all the lead.
Lead and unknown.
So, it's about 300 a year and.
But, if that, if we don't get that unknown number down with our database, we're looking at a pretty significant staffing issue to be able to complete those replacements on time.
With that, any other questions or any questions on the water utility?
One, a couple of things I wanted to point out, you know, you guys haven't really talked much to the council and this is probably a good opportunity. Intake issues that you guys have been having, I think it's important to point that out. And then, James, it looks like he's ready to talk about that, because he's talked to me enough about it and I think this is a good opportunity, because that has some impact. And then, just, I promised, James, I would, you know, repeat this. The budget does not reflect what might happen if the PSC were to take a look at the Clearwells project and say, the rectangular-shaped building will not be paid for by the water utility. That might be required to be paid with the general fund, that's a distinct possibility. So, I promised I would mention that, because that's something that could come out. When the council made the decision to go with the rectangular building, the cost is about an extra $4 million. That was a decision council made and I support that decision. There's no guarantee that the Public Service Commission is going to accept that as being paid for by the utility. They may say, "City, that's a great idea and you'll pay for it yourselves, we're not going to charge the water ratepayers." It's either Peter or Paul's paying it, but Peter and Paul are both in the city, so it's just a matter of how it gets paid for. But, maybe it was Russ more than even James, but that issue's still yet to be resolved. And so, I thought it'd be appropriate to point that out. And then, James, the intake?
Do we know when we might expect a decision on that?
Not until we're going through the construction authorization and rate analysis associated with the construction authorization process.
Which would be roughly?
Um, right now, we're working on design parameters related to the architectural panels. Our design consultants and I had a meeting with the museum to get some ideas. I've seen a few things back and forth, you know, we're working through that. I don't know, do you get a good spitball, Steve?
I would suspect we're probably a year to 18 months out.
On the CA? For Clearwells?
Because construction's scheduled for '25 and '26, I believe, right?
Yeah, or even late next year.
If it's late next year, then it could be a little earlier.
Yeah, working through some of those design things that we need to get done and.
Just in terms of funding and us making sure that, you know, how we want to, if it doesn't go through the utility, if it has to be paid for in general fund, to make sure that that's accounted for in a wise way.
And James and I met with our representatives at Ellers to review not only our water utility, but also when we get into the sanitary sewer and stormwater as far as what rates we might be looking at. We're anticipating that to come to council at the same time as the budget, November. But I think from a water perspective, you know, one of the things we have to work on is the construction authorization for the Clearwells project. But yet, we're also, because of the increase in some of the chemical costs and the operation and maintenance costs, we'll probably have to go back for rate review fairly soon, probably in '25. And a lot of that depends on when you put those assets, because there's some more improvements other than just the Clearwell projects. And if we start bringing some of those things online, we may have to do like a temporary review and then a more permanent one. And we're also looking at, you know, do we go right to clear water loan application or do we do some interim financing for the Clearwell project? So, there's a lot of things happening on the rate side, but it looks like we just went to the PSC for an operational rate review on the water utility in April of '23, but probably '25 or so, we may be going back.
And one of the challenges there is, you know, most rate cases through the Public Service Commission right now are in the 15 to 18-month range for getting even the reviews done through the commission. So, you know, that's a challenge that, you know, regulated utilities, you know, all of them are dealing with.
Thank you.
City manager mentioned the intakes. You know, if you look at the capital plan, you know, there were some, there is and are some items, you know, one, you know, was for looking at the 60-inch intake, which was installed about 20 years ago, but also looking at an analysis of our previous 30- and 36-inch intake. You know, right now, the plant has relied on two very old 24-inch intakes that come out right in front of the plant. Unfortunately, with one of the ice shoves a couple of years ago, we had some damage to those pipes and, you know, their serviceability and reliability is not great. So, we started that process this year by doing an inspection on our 36 intake. We found that, over the course of the past 20 years, there's been a significant amount of sediment that has accumulated in that intake, so the.
60-inch, 60.
The 60, what did I say?
36.
I'm sorry, yes, the 60, thank you. So, there's a large intake crib and then the pipe kind of comes down, it's got a little trap and comes up. You know, in that area, there's a lot of sediment. So, we've been working with contractors and the DNR to try to get a cleaning process permitted. Unfortunately, it's been a very frustrating process with the DNR. You know, through the first six months of meetings, every time we had a meeting, they threw new stuff at us that we had to deal with. So, it's been a very frustrating process with the DNR to try to get this permitted. We still do not have it permitted. We just submitted some additional information within the last couple of weeks that they were asking for. Unfortunately, this is the ideal time of year to be doing a project like that, but we're just, we're struggling to get through the permitting process right now. And one of the reasons, for whatever reason, there just doesn't, doesn't appear to be a lot of, what's the word I'm trying to say? Precedent, precedent for other, you know, utilities doing this type of a work. So, they don't really, they don't have a prescripted playbook to try to go through, so it's very challenging. And, you know, the department has faced a lot of staff turnover over the years, so, you know, the person we're working with has been doing water permitting for six months. You know, they don't know the regulations yet and they're trying to, you know, walk us through a permit application. So, it's been very challenging. And we're looking at possibly having to stage the cleaning of it to get the most clogged part of the pipe done while we continue to evaluate some other things. Our divers also have identified the chloramine solution, which chloramine, if you don't know, we have a small chloramine feed that goes out to the crib, it's zebra muscle control. It's to keep the zebra muscles from clogging off that pipe. The chloramine solution kills them. Well, as we're finding out, that's actually a lot of what's in the pipe is those dead shells, you know, so that's what we're trying to clear out. But we have some piping that we need to get fixed as well, because the piping damage is actually prohibiting us from doing a remote video scan or inspection of the pipe. So, we've actually had to have a diver try to go in the pipe to do the inspections to this point. Not my cup of tea, that's for sure. So, yes, it's been a challenging process. I think we're all a little frustrated with the way it's been going, but we continue to make progress.
Well, James used the word frustrating three times, so you can tell that that's a common theme. But it's a serious issue that we're working with the DNR and James has reached out to some people who've been around the DNR for a while to express our concerns about that, because we can't take this lightly. That's, you know, you can have lots of things go wrong at the plant, but if the basic intake doesn't work, there's nothing to treat. So, I know Jason and Brad are both working very diligently on getting the, keeping the operations of the plant going as best they can, so.
Yeah, without reliable backup right now, you know, if this were to clog up ice this winter, we could lose our water supply. That's what's challenging and frustrating to us. But that's also why we wanted to look at reestablishing the old 36-inch. And we've been making progress on that regard, getting a few things done that we need to get done to try to get to that point. But we've got to get the, I think we've got to get the 60 done so we can do some additional work to the 36.
Thanks, James.
Any other questions on water utility? All right, then we'll move on to the sewer utility, page 402, kind of right after water utility.
Makes sense.
Yeah, I got the utilities in the order that are in the book at least, that we're not flipping around as much, but the rest of the department is kind of all over the place. Sewer utility, as with water utility, you know, support economic development, improve and maintain our infrastructure and strengthen our neighborhoods. You know, protecting public health and safety by providing effective treatment of sanitary waste generated not only by properties within the city, but also the existing five sanitary districts and soon-to-be sixth sanitary district coming online. And we do have another one that's been talking to us as well about potentially coming to get treatment from us. You know, so right now, the five districts that we do currently serve are in the towns of Algoma, Black Wolf, and Oshkosh. Town of Algoma and Black Wolf each have one district, town of Oshkosh has three that we're serving right now. The soon-to-come online will be a fourth in the town of Oshkosh. And as I mentioned, we've got another one that's been reaching out to us, primarily due to additional regulatory challenges with complying with the phosphorus regulations for the small district. The sewer utility continues to focus on reducing clear water influent infiltration into the sanitary sewer system. You know, so far, the work that we've done, you know, on the public side in the right-of-way has had some very positive impacts on the wet. of ways, has had some very positive impacts on the wet weather flows going to the wastewater treatment plant. You know, previously, I know, you know, wastewater treatment plant manager Sorge isn't here, but, you know, he would say, you know, in past years, you know, you get a two inch rain and their flow meters have been pegged at over a hundred million gallons a day as far as flow rate coming in. Now that same same rainfall event, they're only hitting about sixty. So we've had a lot of positive impacts. We certainly have more work to do. And we are a very old city. There is a lot of private side influence infiltration. You know, as as we look back at the standard details from, you know, when the city started all the way into, you know, almost the first half of the nineteen hundreds, you know, we started separating our systems in the late thirties. You know, before that, everything went to one pipe. So, you know, the Y came off the main. There was a branch that went and picked up the foundation drains. There was a branch that picked up the plumbing. Another one went to the backyard to help drain the backyards. Well, a lot of those parts of the city, those connections are still there. You know, so one of the things that we're working with our information or communications consultant for our work for next year is really looking at targeting information towards the private side of influence infiltration reduction to see if we can't further reduce those clear water flows into the wastewater plant. We have continued working with the Wisconsin State Lab of Hygiene on the COVID nineteen wastewater study. Our our lab takes samples and ships them off for testing. I don't know, is that weekly, every other week? Every other week, I think, yeah. Our facilities plan update was submitted to the DNR late last year. As council may remember, we had a public hearing, I believe it was December, on the wastewater facilities plan. We've had some back and forth. The department staff have asked for some clarifications and additional information. So we're working with the department on responding to all of that. Our most recent discharge permit application has been submitted. Our discharge permit for wastewater runs out at the end of this year. I don't know if we'll see a new one by then or if we'll continue operating under the old one until we do get a new one. But that is an every-five-year process that we have to go through with the department. Hopefully, you know, the last two permit cycles, we've ended up in legal challenges that lasted about four years each. So hopefully, we're not there with this one again. And then one of the big projects that we have been able to complete in the plant is a polymer feed system for our solids de-watering. Equipment-wise, we purchased the equipment, but staff did a lot of work for the installation themselves, so we didn't have to hire a contractor for the installation. So staff did a great job getting, uh, getting all of that installation taken care of. As with the water, we continue to see an increase in regulatory requirements. You know, certainly those of you that have been on council for a while, you know, we've been talking phosphorus for a number of years. The TMDL, the Total Maximum Daily Load Plan for the Upper Fox and Wolf watershed has been approved and we are moving forward with trying to meet the compliance requirements of that as well as our permit. So that's kind of the biggest challenge right now. And as we mentioned on the water side, you know, chemical use or chemical costs are just continuing to skyrocket for the treatment. You know, we talked a lot about chlorine at water. It's not our primary disinfection. Here at wastewater, it is our primary disinfection. You know, so we've seen, you know, that cost just continue to go up tremendously. And based on what we're hearing from, you know, people in the chemical industry, it's it's not going to be turning around anytime soon.
If I could jump back, James had mentioned the phosphorus. One of the lesser-known projects that's going to be happening at the wastewater plant is on par, if not larger than the Clearwells in cost and impact to the city in the next five years. And that's a building, design and building of a tertiary filtration facility, which will be the third step of treating our wastewater to reduce phosphorus. And that is going to entail a brand-new building, new filters, pumping. Along with that will probably be the upgrades to the emergency generators because that's a whole new process. We don't have the power capacity. So, I mean, it's going to be thirty-ish million dollars. And that is supposed to be online by January first of twenty twenty-seven with the new permit going through conversations with the DNR and scheduling. We're looking at trying to meet that, but moving forward. But it's something that kind of doesn't really get a lot of talk, but it's out there. So members of the council that are here now and going forward, if you're the same council in the next couple of years, but you'll definitely be hearing more about it, it's going to be a significant project. So I just wanted to get that out on the radar for those of you who aren't aware of it.
Thank you, Jason.
So the the same thing we that I talked about as far as rate review, it looks like our sanitary sewer rates will have to be amended. We plan for about a four percent adjustment on the revenue side of things, but we're working with Ellers to make sure that that covers the operating expenses and then the future capital items that we have and right now identified in the in our CIP process. So of the three utilities, I think we'll be looking at a recommendation for a sanitary sewer rate adjustment for twenty twenty-four. That'll be on a future council agenda as well.
Any other questions on wastewater? All right, then we'll move into stormwater. Thank you, Jason. I think I saw Justin sneaking in behind you. Stormwater utility is on page four oh seven. Morning, Justin.
All right.
Long time no see.
It's been a while.
Uh, stormwater utility services fall into improve and maintain our infrastructure primarily, but, you know, also I would, you know, I would go so far as to say they would fall into, you know, our improving our neighborhoods as well by reducing flooding and improving our water quality. The primary mission of the stormwater utility is to reduce flooding and manage the quality of stormwater runoff throughout our city. Stormwater utility is also responsible for ensuring that the city is in compliance with the requirements of the DNR MS four, the Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System Permit. So that's where, and we talked about the wastewater permit just a few moments ago. I believe our stormwater permits do this year as well.
I believe it is.
So both of those permits are on the same cycle. In the case of the stormwater permit, though, we have coverage under a general permit. So it's kind of a more generic, applies across the state. As far as from the wastewater side, it's an individual tailored right to our system permit. And that permit, you know, the DNR issues it, but it's in compliance in accordance with the EPA's Clean Water, Federal Clean Water Act. Some key accomplishments for the stormwater utility this year, we've got our annual storm lateral mini-storm program. That project is just wrapping up for the year. I think it's not quite done, but they're getting close. We've completed the update, the citywide stormwater quality management plan. And that update was done to ensure compliance with the the EPA-approved TMDL for the Upper Fox and Wolf watershed. We've completed a bridge work on the Gallup-Smerits Creek over at Bradley Street. Those of you who've been here for a few years, you've probably heard that Gallup-Smerits Creek the last few years. We did the Waukauh Avenue Bridge one year, the Oregon Street Bridge the next year, and then the Bradley Street Bridge this year. So we've had three in a row that are really quite close to each other geographically as well. I mean, Waukauh and Oregon, you know, if you follow the creek, it's only a couple hundred feet. You know, they're literally right around the corner from each other on the streets. And then the other big one is starting construction on the Sawyer Creek Watershed Rural Detention Basin Number Two. So that project got underway about a month ago.
Get close.
Some potential impacts is, you know, from a budgetary standpoint, you know, compliance with the Upper Fox Wolf, Upper Fox and Wolf River Basin TMDL. We have not seen, and I think we'll see once we see the new permit, what the compliance requirements we're going to be under. If it's like previous TMDL approvals, they've given the stormwater programs ten permit cycles to come into compliance. A permit cycle is five years, so that's fifty years. But they also expect to see incremental progress. And that's one of the things that we have to report to the DNR with our annual report every year is what kind of incremental progress we are making in compliance with the TMDL. Anything you want to add on stormwater, Russ?
No, um, one of the things, when we looked at our rates review in twenty, for twenty twenty-three, we thought we might have to do a rate adjustment for our stormwater fees for twenty twenty-four. In our latest conversation, we're still finalizing the operation and maintenance expenses. But in talking with Ellers, there's a possibility we may not have to increase our stormwater fees next year. The other encouraging news is, based on the financial position of our stormwater utility, we might not have to issue debt for the CIP projects for stormwater for twenty twenty-four. We might be able to have enough cash on hand to fund our planned projects. So it looks like we might have not have to go to borrow for those projects, which will help our coverage ratio and our our information going forward. We met with the, Mark and I met with the chamber last week. We had a couple of questions about utility costs and, you know, this is the one utility that the chamber has kind of kept their eye on ever since it was created for the city. You know, we, I think, have a lot of projects in the works and are lined up in our CIP that we need to accomplish, but, you know, it it's expensive to buy real estate and put a hole in the ground for stormwater management, plus all the other regulatory things we have to do. But the long and short of it is, we might not have to adjust our rates for twenty twenty-four. So.
That's a good thing.
And we were anticipating a two or six percent.
Six and a half is what our our last analysis anticipated for this coming year. But as as Russ mentioned, we had a preliminary conversation with Ellers Friday. We had a few numbers that, you know, we updated in the budget that they didn't have yet, so we're going back and forth with them, making sure they get all the latest information so they can refine those analyses. But definitely it was a promising conversation, you know, you know, even with some of the adjustments, if we do end up having to do something, it'll be very small.
So the rate review for all our utilities, we anticipate to have that back from Ellers and distribute to you the night of the public hearing on the seventh, November seventh, but we would look for action on November fourteenth as part of the, you know, either right before or right after the budget adoption.
That was really healthy that you have the possible ability to cash flow debt instead of debt.
Yeah. So stormwater is looking fairly good from a financial perspective.
All right, any questions? All right, well, with Justin here, we will move on to the engineering division then. Now we will jump back, page one twenty-six. Give everybody a moment to find that one.
Go to the public works tab and then go in a couple pages.
Engineering Division Services fit into improve and maintain our infrastructure, support economic development and improve our quality of life sections of the strategic plan. You know, those services include the division's primary responsibility for managing construction projects. Engineering Division's responsible for survey, design and inspection of our annual street reconstruction programs, annual asphalt overlay program, sanitary sewer, water main and storm sewer design, and the coordination of long-range planning documents related to water, wastewater and stormwater utilities. Engineering Division also assists several other departments in planning and managing construction projects, continuing to assist the Parks Department with projects, providing design and construction services for transportation related to the parking lot reconstruction, and continue to support community development by assisting developers and helping manage city construction projects. Certainly, probably one of the biggest construction projects you've heard a lot about lately has been the Pratt Trail Reconstruction within Menominee Park. You know, that's a perfect example of one. Engineering Division did the design, the survey design and was managing construction for the Parks Department and, you know, working very closely with UWM throughout the whole process. So not going to, not going to get that project done this year, though. Uh, some key accomplishments within the division, design bid and managing approximately forty million dollars worth of construction this year. In talking with some of the engineering consultants that we work with, several of them have said that's more than we do as a firm. You know, our engineering division is, you know, as I said, this year, about forty million dollars worth of construction. Last year, twenty twenty-two, it was in the low thirty million range. So, you know, that division continues to manage just an exceptional amount of construction activity for the for the city. You know, our big street reconstruction projects this year, Wisconsin Street, Lincoln, Elmwood, and then the Tyler Arthur Baumann Coolidge area. As I mentioned, we started the Pratt Trail construction project, hopefully be able to finish that next year. And then a number of water sewer and pa, um, storm and paving projects as well. And we we regularly have a water main replacement project where we're not doing, you know, it's not part of a street reconstruction project, but it's a water main-only project. Sanitary sewer, we talked about influence infiltration reduction. The engineering division manages not only a manhole rehab program, but also a sewer lining program where they, instead of digging up and replacing the sewer, if the street and the other utilities are in good condition, we can have that sewer lined to extend the life of it. And those types of projects are all managed by the engineering division. We've also started working with our communications consultant to develop a business owner's toolkit to assist businesses in navigating construction projects. We hope to have that complete by the end of this year or early in twenty twenty-four. Then we're going to be looking at trying to adapt some of that information to the residential side as well. The Department of Transportation has a a tool, they call it the In This Together Program, where they've developed a lot of tools to help, you know, businesses navigate DOT managed construction projects. We're using a lot of that information that the DOT has already created as a starting point and and making it specific to how the city of Oshkosh does construction. One of the other new additions this year was we launched a new construction activity and street closure dashboard. So, you know, no longer are we producing static maps every week and posting them to the website and printing them. And, you know, there's an active dashboard managed through our GIS staff on Esri ArcGIS Online. But you can literally, you can click on the project and it'll give you all the specific information about the project. They'll tell you which one of the engineering division staff is managing that project and how to get ahold of them if you have questions. So that's kind of a new and interesting tool that we we launched this year, and I think it's, it's going to help us be able to better communicate with the residents of what's going on. From a budgetary standpoint, the state requires the city to update the street's Pacer rating on a biannual basis. That work is being done this year in twenty twenty-three, so you'll see it's not in the twenty-four budget. But next year, we'll be sitting here saying it's back in the twenty-five budget. So it's an every-other-year expense that we have to go through. Any questions on engineering division? All right. Moving on to the administration division, which is just a couple pages in front of engineering. Page one twenty-three. The administration division, you know, it's there to really support all of the other divisions within the department. You know, strategic plan-wise falling into improving, maintaining infrastructure, supporting economic development, enhancing quality of life and strengthening our neighborhoods. You know, looking at personnel, it's, you know, a portion of myself, a portion of Steve, and then our administrative assistant. That's, that's the extent of our administration division. You know, one of the biggest things, you know, that branches out across the entire department was completing the departmental strategic communication plan and starting implementation. Council, remember, you know, about six months ago, we came to you and notified you that we had launched a Department of Public Works official Facebook page, not to be confused with the one that Facebook had created many years ago, but, you know, we actually have an active departmental page right now. On average, probably three-ish posts a week going out. We're trying to schedule them kind of Monday, Wednesday, Friday, but certainly as other things come up, we're getting that information spread distributed that way. We're sharing stuff from other departments and, you know, working with Oshkosh Media to continue sharing a lot of information across all of our platforms. So that was, I think, one of the, the big things was getting that communications plan completed, starting the implementation and, you know, I think our, our. starting the implementation, and, you know, I think our first actual social media presence as a department. So that was a big step forward as a department this year. We talked earlier about, you know, insurance costs and, you know, some people being on or off, you know. This is one of the divisions where, you know, we've got somebody who has not previously been on. City Insurance is going to be moving on to it due to changes at home. Any questions there? Otherwise, we will flip to the last of the departmental budgets, the Public Works Special Fund on page 234. Special Revenue Funds Section. So this particular fund is kind of a combination, you know, we're using it to manage the lead service line replacement program as well as our work-in-right-of-way permit program. So money expended in this fund for private-side lead service replacements is offset with reimbursements through the Department of Natural Resources, safe drinking water loan program. We just wrapped up the last of our prior principal forgiveness loan programs. Getting into a little bit of, you know, some of our accomplishments from a lead service standpoint, you know, to date, we've assisted about 670 property owners with getting their private-side lead services replaced. That's not just year, just this year, that's been since we started that program. Just late last week, we received information from DNR regarding funding for the rest of '23 and '24. We're evaluating what they've given us, but based on our initial review, it looks like we may be receiving approximately $550,000 of principal forgiveness money, but that's got to be offset by other money. That's a 50/50 roughly, right, Steve? You know, so our program right now requires property owners to pay half up to a certain amount of their private-side replacement. So that 50/50 split in the program looks good for how we've been managing our program. We just got to try to see what we can do. Our program has had additional funding available for meeting certain targets on the low to moderate income scale, whether it was at 50% or 80%. So we're working with community development to see if there's maybe some CDBG money to help continue that additional reimbursement available for those income thresholds. This fund is also, as I mentioned, you know, our work-in-right-of-way permit program, that's the one staff member that's in this fund, is the technician that works on that program. Those costs are offset with work-in-right-of-way permit fees. So far to date this year, we've had about 425 work-in-right-of-way permits and obstruction permits issued, so pretty good number. Plus, that particular individual's been doing a lot to try to manage some of the slow response from the fiber optic installation that was going on. So still got a lot of restoration work that they're still working through with that.
Can I go back and ask a question on the lead service replacement? Kind of more of a commentary for some of the newer council members, but, you know, as we go through, we've had discussions on special assessments and, you know, the total package price for street reconstructions for our residents. You know, them getting a 50% credit, you know, matching credit is a huge help and reduction of that. Right now, we're not using any local levy dollars to support that project.
Correct.
Correct. It doesn't mean that we can't or use other funds, but just as we keep that discussion going, making sure that that program is still viable because, you know, your project's coming up. They're in some of our most economically disadvantaged spaces in the community, and every dollar matters for them. So if that money's not there, it may be something that we have to try to get creative with to try to help backfill in the future. So more of a commentary than a question, I guess, for you, but.
Yeah, it's been a year-to-year thing with the DNR, and it's, it always lags so far behind. You know, we've got a number of properties that were on this year's street reconstruction projects that couldn't get in the most, the last program, so they've been kind of sitting and waiting. And like I said, we just got information last week, and we're still reviewing it with the agencies, and we've got to get all the agreements executed. It's a lengthy process with the agencies. You know, we mentioned it, you know, certainly the expense and then the revenue side, you know, the lead service side, it's very dependent on residents taking advantage of the program. As Mayor indicated, we've got some, you know, projects, our projects coming up are in areas that have a very high likelihood of having lead services, you know, so I think we'll continue to see that usage. This current funding cycle is using some of the funding that was made available through the bipartisan infrastructure law, so, you know, that's kind of providing money into the safe drinking water loan program for this most recent round of lead service line replacements. And I think that's the plan for next year's, too. Is that right, Steve? Are they using bill money yet?
Next year's bill money, yes.
So, and we're still evaluating the application, but we need to get our intent to apply submitted by tomorrow. So Steve's been working a lot on that to last week. Any other questions there?
James or Russ, is there anything in the CIP that goes change from the time the council had adopted the plan versus the budget that is worth, and I'm not thinking of anything, I'm not, I didn't plan this, but we do have a little time, so to the degree that there's anything in there that.
The, I think the one thing that's, the one significant change, I think, between the time that the plan was approved and most recently was the shift on the Furno Avenue construction from Vinland to Jackson. The plan originally had that as funding to be determined. If you look at your most recent ARPA allocation spreadsheet from Finance Director Van Gompel, you'll see that the Furno Ave construction is planned to receive some ARPA money. Justin and I have been looking at other projects that, other construction projects that have been coming in under budget. We're looking at using funding from several of those projects to make up the difference. I think at the end of the day, the only additional potential borrowing or that we would need to do is around $600,000 on the stormwater side. Otherwise, we're looking at shifting money from several other projects to make up the difference that ARPA wasn't making up on the Furno Ave construction, to get that, in my opinion, very critical piece of Furno Ave, Vinland and Jackson Street constructed.
So if you go to page 55 of your budget book, is, it actually starts on page 54. I gave a recap of where we're at with all of our ARPA projects, starting with the initial award, going through the 2024 projects. Well, actually, as part of the resolution, actually ask you to appropriate the 2024 projects in November, on the November 14th, a final resolution. So the last box on page 55 is the projects for 2024. The '22, '23 projects have already been appropriated, funding's been in place. My only comment for council, for those listening, is, and for the department heads that may go back and look at it, is the '22 and '23 projects, we still have to stay and monitor that situation. Haley and our office has to put together a semi-annual report to Department of Treasury on where we're spending. And so, you know, we have a lot of projects that are still on course, but as we look with all of our ARPA funding, projects have to be, quote-unquote, committed by the end of '24. So I want to show that all the appropriations have been made. When we did, the CIP council asked that we took, take out the Pioneer Riverwalk, and we substituted Furno Avenue, and you can see that listed at 2.7. And the other note is, we had identified about $250,000 that initially we were going to cover with levy, but to keep the tax levy lower, I reduced the amount of funding or tax levy going into the capital fund, the equipment replacement fund, and I put $250,000 to reduce the levy out of that for 2024. And that would be, I just picked two projects that totaled $250,000, which is the ADA improvements within our facilities and the concrete repairs. So I pulled them out of levy and put them into ARPA to get to the final funding amount. So I don't know if there's any questions on any of the projects, but those are the main ones.
You mentioned Furno was an important or a critical piece. Can you give us a little on why? I haven't seen Furno in any, it hasn't been at the top of many lists in the last couple of years, so I'm wondering how it's critical.
The reason it hasn't been at the top of a lot of lists is because it is a new construction versus the reconstruction, which we have so many needs there as well. Furno had been getting looked at several years ago as far as using, you know, a different state and federal funding program. Did not end up working out for that one, so it kind of, because it was new construction, it was getting put off in favor of our reconstruction programs. But the connection of Furno from Vinland to Jackson creates a connection from our North Industrial Park directly over to US Highway 45 and the interchange at Interstate 41. So it is very convenient for getting traffic out of the North Industrial Park and, you know, heavy truck traffic as well, and getting it to the interchange at 41 and 45, in particular for traffic that wants to go north on Highway 45 instead of, you know, north on I-41. It will also work to reduce some of the traffic that is inappropriately using Vinland Street right now because of trying to, you know, get maybe from the North Industrial Park. You know, right now, out of the North Industrial Park, you can cross Jackson at Snell and come down Vinland Street, but Vinland Street is not a truck route. So there are a lot of, you know, especially if you, you know, there's a lot of town properties there, you know, if you talk to the town chair, you know, it will tell you there is a lot of truck traffic that uses that street that shouldn't be using that street. You know, so getting this connection will help reduce or, I won't say eliminate, because you're not going to eliminate all people inappropriately using it, but significantly reduce the amount of traffic on a, truck traffic on a street that shouldn't have it.
That land's still in the town, or is it in the city?
Which land is that?
Where you're going to put that road?
It's city-owned land. Currently, it is still in the town, but we would go through a process, and we know there's been some development inquiries for the land immediately adjacent on the west half of Furno Ave as well. I know Justin's been working with Kelly and her staff on some development inquiries in that area.
That's probably a good follow-up question for Kelly tomorrow because she has more of the insight on the economic development side. These guys have the view on the traffic connection stuff.
Yeah, the sanitary sewer through that land was installed 20 years ago, so there's already sanitary sewer through there, so it would be, you know, water main, storm sewer, stormwater management, and then street paving. Any other questions there? Any other questions in general? That was the last of the items I had on my list. All right, hearing none, I think we will pack ourselves up and make room for the next.
City Attorney must have been watching on TV, so she saw that, so she took the cue that.
Thank you, everyone.
To come early.
He's so excited to talk to us.
Absolutely. I'm sure that's the reason. And actually, we're still, we're due to take lunch at 12:00 if you want to. We could, before lunch, the last budget tomorrow is my budget and the council budget. We might be able to squeeze it in before lunch.
Good plan.
Lynn will make you go from page to page. She basically takes you to one page.
Is there anything that changed on mine?
Lynn, City Attorney starts at page 63. Not sure what you guys are going through, but 63 is close.
She slipped me notes, I don't know what they are.
All righty. Probably some changes on personnel pages.
Looks like it, yep. But nothing for mine.
Yeah, I think.
All right.
I think so. I thought they were. Sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, all right. So the City Attorney's Office is primarily a personnel office. We do have some costs and expenses, but, and we've had a few changes in those areas, but most of our cost is personnel-related. The non-personnel costs that we have, some increases in professional fees and training and our copy machine, this is like oddly bouncing, sorry. Our copy machine costs have increased. For training, we've been able to, the last few years, do a little more by virtual training, and they're going back, I'm looking at Lakeisha because she's going to get caught with it too. They're going back to requiring a little more personal, in-person time for some of those trainings, so that'll involve some travel time. We're also increasing their training for our admin assistant, which I'll come back to in a little bit. And then the last few used the State Bar Conference and the Municipal Attorney's Conference have been on the same week, so we saved money because we can't be in two places at one time, so we can only, we've only been able to attend one of those conferences. So we are probably going to see a little bit of an increase in our training, and that's reflected in the budget. Other than that, the focus of our budget is generally on our accomplishments and goals. For 2023, we had working on the Sanitary District's Master Agreement at budget time last year. We hadn't even met with them, so we did make a lot of progress. At least we're sitting down, we're talking, we're exchanging drafts. I do owe you an update. We did receive a draft about a week ago and spent some time going through it. We had a meeting Thursday, Friday, was it Friday last week?
Friday afternoon meeting, Lynn.
Yeah. To go through that, so as an internal staff, so I do owe you an update based on my notes out of that meeting that I'll probably get to you this week. Public records ordinance was our update, was on our list from last year. We were able to move our updates through the State Public Records Forms Board and update all the other departments on where you stand with your records, what you have to keep, what you can get rid of, what the criteria are for that, so that when we were able to check off. And then we typically, every year, and you'll see it in the 2024 goals as well, we include a training component because that's been a focus for the last, I don't know, at least five years, I would say, maybe more, yes, is to use our office to provide some basic training for staff, boards and commissions, and council. Last year, we had identified real estate basics. We actually didn't end up doing that. That was primarily related to community development, and we worked out with them. We're actually doing more monthly project-based meetings and answering questions, so it's kind of a training through example rather than going through and doing a formal training where we're meeting with them more regularly and talking about any issues in those meetings. So just still kind of working on education, but in a different format. And then we, our focus last year was kind of on First Amendment stuff, which was one of my geeked-out things from law school. So we worked with our social media staff and then also the library on First Amendment training and completed that. Again, we're a service department, so as everybody else comes up and tells you how busy and crazy everything is, if they're crazy and busy, we're crazy and busy because we support all the other departments. And as they also talk to you about staff turnover, when they have new staff, that generally creates a little extra work for us because we help train those people or answer questions. We have two of the longer-standing staff people in City Hall, myself and my deputy city attorney, Dave Prasca. So we just have been around long enough that we are kind of a go-to for people of, you know, how does the city handle these? staff people in City Hall, myself and my deputy city attorney, Dave Praska. So we just have been around long enough that we are kind of a go-to for people of, you know, how does the city handle these things? So so we've been busy. We do handle all the various legal issues for the departments, contracts, policy reviews, ordinance revisions and interpretations, public records requests, real estate issues. We get involved with if there's an acquisition for city property, or we do a ton of like easements, both for city, public works or parks sometimes has easements or other entities looking for easements from the city. We've the last few years have done a lot of work with private utilities wanting easements over city properties and development agreements and TIF districts, those kinds of that. And then just general advice. And as I said, some of some of the general advice isn't even legal advice. It's just you've been here long enough. How do we do these things? So just I would say generally, things have gotten more and more complex and complicated over time in in almost every area. So it takes a little more time to evaluate the questions and respond. Even though we've been here forever, that doesn't mean the questions are the same questions that come up all the time or that there isn't a kind of a different take on it now. So it's both volume and complexity. I wanted to just highlight one area we cover. That's our prosecution cases. We've seen about a thirty percent increase in prosecution cases over the last year or so. So we had from January first, these numbers I'm going to give you are from January first to today, five hundred and very small numbers, five hundred and three hundred, five thousand, sorry, five thousand, three hundred and fifteen cases for intake, four hundred, five hundred and forty-four pre-trials and twenty-two trials so far this year. Just a couple of things in relation to prosecution. This is where I had mentioned, we are doing more training with our admin assistant and increasing some of those costs. She has a degree and she had her degree for as a paralegal, and we are in the process of getting her recertified and certified in Wisconsin for that purpose because we want to rebalance some of the workload in our office. And that would allow us to shift, of course, with attorney supervision, some of the first stages in the prosecution cases to the that administrative position and give our prosecutor a little bit of relief. And then she can help with some of the other projects in the city. So with the volume that she's working with, we kind of need to do that or she's going to just spend all her time on just prosecution. And we need her to actually help with some other things in the office as well. So that's been something we've been working on. Prosecution is also just becoming more intensive as well. I mean, the the cases are are I keep looking at you and I'm sorry, just because I know you sympathize with me. It's a sympathetic gaze.
She's looking for a sympathetic ear on this issue.
But the issues are more complex. And we have had more motion work. We with body camera, we love body camera because it shows us everything. It also takes a lot of time to go through. And so every time you have particularly the pre-trials and the trials, again, we had five hundred and forty-four pre-trials and twenty-two trials. We want to look at that body camera. We want to see and make sure that what's in the report and what we're relying on is reflected in the body cam. We also reports don't catch everything, right? So, you know, we we are taking a look at that. So it's either the prosecuting attorney or Tashi and our administrative assistant is going through all of those. And that's a really time-consuming process.
Can I just interject?
Yeah.
Just to agree with you.
Anytime you want to interject and agree with me.
Cost-saving measures because you don't want to hire another attorney at the pay of counsel. But to certify your administrative assistant will alleviate that without having to have to do something that.
Can do. Correct. Yes.
Do the same thing. Wisconsin's just kind of a little behind the ball. I'm using our paralegals properly. But it does save having to hire, you know, an attorney and pay that cost. And, you know, to spend all of your time doing more than administrative things as counsel.
In full disclosure, on Lynn's behalf, she didn't she she had put in an enhancement request, which I frankly just couldn't fund. And it was not for an extra attorney. It was for it was for a paralegal. And then the administrative assistant position would get backfilled because we have a three-person office and only one support person. So that that's on the light side. And I know that from experience. So yeah, I told Lynn I would certainly bring that up as well. That's a real challenge, especially given the volume of court cases that have gone up. And, you know, I it's sort of a it's sort of a paradox because our revenue's going down because of the increase in diversion programs. But that's also helping that's intended to help lighten the load of the court system, which is is a good thing. It's also tended to keep intended to keep people out of jail as well. But the challenge is that we're doing more work even though we're getting less revenue for that very work. So I told you, I, you know, at least get it out there.
I wasn't going to mention it, but thank you.
But but I appreciate because Lakeisha, you brought it up in terms of, you know, avoiding having to hire another attorney, which would be much more costly. But, you know, it's a that is absolutely a challenge that her offices.
And we're fortunate enough to have somebody that can take on that that additional responsibility. And she's she's honestly, she is very, very good at it. So, yeah. So we're we're working on getting her certified and will keep keep plugging away with what we what we can do with that.
Just one body camera. Every officer that shows up, seven.
Yeah.
And you're here to hear that speech. Did the chief talk to you already? That's the speech that the chief is going to give this afternoon. So it really is, you know, this is on the prosecution side, on the law enforcement side, you know, it takes some hours to look at, you know, one incident because seven officers show up and you're looking at seven body cameras because each angle's different. But I won't steal the chief's thunder. That's we didn't say we would do that. So but but you got to look at it too, or Amy does.
So just directly related, I totally understand why everybody would go to you with questions. But is there a process that we can put in place that she doesn't get inundated with non-legal questions to maybe make another resource available for people?
That's an ongoing thing that that I've talked to staff about, you know, things like resolutions and things, things like that. Other departments are picking up that part of the of the work. The training part is really more about risk aversion, you know, trying to avoid that. And because of the turnover in staff, I think Lynn and her staff have actually done sort of repeat training because a group, you know, if she did one on open meetings law for the council, for example.
Right.
We've had a complete turnover of council in the last seven years. Matt, that's a you've been the longest-serving, seven years now?
About six.
About about six. So six years ago, we had a completely different group. One of the other things, Lynn, I can't remember if you mentioned, you're going to be working with Ashkesh Media.
It's coming up.
All right. Well, they're.
Leading me in.
All right. I'm just going to throw it back.
So for kind of moving forward then to 2024, our new goals, and I'll start with that one then. We are, you know, adding training in again because again, we think that's really important. I've talked to Mark about changing up how we're doing our training so that we could maybe work with Ashkesh Media and do kind of like training modules that people can access, you know, as a new person comes on or as board and commission members come on, the staff can send them, here's the the blurb about, you know, open meetings law for a board and commission member. Because it is very time-consuming. It's nice. I really like going around to the different boards and commissions because they get to know us. It's just time-consuming. And it's with everything else, it's become more difficult. And so we want to try something different and and do we do provide in your own boards and commissions. So you've seen, we give little manuals and stuff, but I don't know how many people actually read that stuff. So if we can provide a little link and say, here's, you know, here's a five, 10-minute video to watch. If you need more, we gave you a manual. You can read it and you can call us. Now you know what I look like. I'm hopeful that that will provide a better resource for information that that people feel they can, you know, go to when it's convenient for them and that it still provides some connection with us so that if someone wants to talk to us, it's not, I don't want to call the city attorney. We don't even know who she is. And and this way, they'll at least have seen me on a video. But it's, you know, it's at least some outreach. So that is that is one of the goals that we'd like to do. And we sort of drafted the media department to help us with that because we're attorneys and not media. I know one other city did it where they literally opened their laptop and talked to the laptop. And I'm like, wow, I could do that. But I don't know how friendly that's going to be to watch. So we we kind of co-opted media to help us out with that and make it look a little better. But.
And the League of Municipalities is going to do that. You know, they've had that government 101 that some of you may have gone to. But even that, it's very difficult to get working elected officials to go to these things because they're they're all-day events. And you're already giving up two days for us with this, let alone other training. So they're looking at putting some of those into that module-type training. So some of them, we may not even have to do. Others would be more specific to us because of our number of boards and commissions. I think we have some more unique circumstances. So that's where the city attorney's office and Ashkesh Media could work together. And we might be able to just steal one or two of these from the league as well.
Second one's kind of a repeat as well. We're continuing to work with Public Works and some of their bigger projects. We have been helping them obviously with the sanitary districts agreement, some of the floodplain issues. I was listening. So I heard James mention the W PDS permit for the city. We work with them on that. We're hoping I also will add my I hope we don't have another legal challenge on our permit this year. But a lot of those bigger projects, we work very closely with Public Works on. So that that was another goal we identified. And then finally, we're looking ahead to try to balance out our workload and responsibilities to maximize attorney time and do basically succession planning because it will not be too long down the line when someone in the office may leave. Dave and I are both the same age range. So we want.
Age range.
I know. I don't want to like, I'm not going to admit anything. And but we want to plan for that kind of eventual succession planning so that hopefully it can be a very smooth transition because I think that will help whoever, you know, takes over to move keep moving forward. Because we really feel like we've done a lot for our office over the years to, I mean, you talk about people who come to us and that's it's kind of a burden, but it also is is a good thing because it we know that people find us approachable. They know we we will help even if it's not a strictly legal issue. And some of that is good. And we want to keep that up. The last thing I think I wanted to mention was just kind of going along that vein. We are very active in the League of Municipalities, the attorney's section. I did a panel this spring, June, I guess, for their June conference and participated in that, which was actually in my hometown. So that was kind of nice. And I also have been was invited to help with the practical course at the UW Law School, their municipal attorney week. And they've asked me back again, and it's not in January this year. So I'm very excited about that because it's always been in January and very cold. But we'll I'll be doing that again this next year. Amy has been doing statewide OWI training for police officers, and they have asked her back. So I think that all of that shows we're we're a very well-respected municipal attorney's office throughout the state. And I I want to get us set up for that and and get the next person in and have that person maintain that and be able to move forward. So.
Especially if you have all the training modules done.
Yeah, they make it a little easier on him, right?
Well-respected by the.
Well, thank you. That was all I had. So.
Yeah.
All right.
Thanks, Lynn.
Thank you.
If you'd like, we've got about thirty-seven minutes. I, yeah, twenty-seven, excuse me.
Yeah, something to yours.
Yeah. And so if you want to, we could jump to three-thirty tomorrow afternoon or four, yeah, three-thirty, three-forty-five to go over the council and the city manager budget. They begin on page fifty-seven, which is right after the general government tab.
Fifty-seven?
Fifty-seven, yes.
Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you, Lynn.
Thanks, Lynn. So the the budget for the council, aside from your salary, consists of some dues, professional memberships, the league, the chamber, things of that nature. The council's pay is governed by a council resolution. And we had visited that a while back. And I think there was a question about the deputy mayor's salary. And I think the consensus was not to make any changes. So no changes are proposed here. By resolution, the council has asked us to bring it back upon the election of every mayor. So that's when we brought it back this time. So every two years, we bring it back. I think we're in the ballpark on our comparables for Chapter sixty-four cities with the council constructed the way we have here. That's really about it. There's a slight increase in the dues because of league dues, the formula that's used, it's a combination of population and other factors. But there's no percentage increase in the league dues. But the formula ups it a little bit. So that's we've just got that in there just in case. Not sure if there's any questions with my explanation.
What do we get? I don't even know. What's our salary for council?
Salary for council?
Five thousand?
Five thousand, yeah. So if there's no questions there, then the next one is the city manager's office. That's pretty much consists of my administrative assistant, Kami, and myself. And, you know, for the most part, aside from the salaries, the training and development, the travel with all the work that we were doing with shared revenue, that kept me very busy in the past two years. I'm still on the league board, so my travel budget is is reflecting the additional travel associated with that. And pretty much everything else is governed by my contract and provisions in my contract. The health insurance is is down because one of us won't be taking insurance. So that saves a little bit of money. And that's pretty much that budget as well. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions if you have them, particularly those who are new on the council. Either the either my budget or either the council budget, certainly happy to answer any questions you might have. And I use up whopping four minutes.
Question mark.
I think Kami closed.
You span.
Yeah. I think Kami closed the door because lunch is here. So we could do that or we could do Russ's probably.
Go to Russ.
You want to go to Russ?
Can you get it done in twenty-four?
Yes.
Today means out earlier tomorrow. More time to ask questions.
Yeah, lots of Q and A.
Record is four. Let's.
I can give it to four.
Tell me what you need to tell me.
No pressure.
Our budget starts on page seventy-six. Finance department basically have all of the taking care of all the records, payroll, the receipting, working with departments on budgets and memos to council, those type of things. Our goal was to continue to work. work with um, uh, our policy on general obligation debt. Um, it's well below 70%. The long-range finance now is trying to get to 40, um, so we're working towards that. Um, you know, a portion of my salary gets allocated to the general fund, but also two-thirds of that or 75% of that gets allocated to the utilities. But we have two assistant finance directors, management analysts, payroll coordinator, staff accountant. And then our clerical up front, people that you see when you pay your bills, get charged out to utilities. And then we have accounting people in the back office doing accounts payable, accounts receivable, those type of things. So almost all of our budget is in personnel. Um, we also have expenditures, uh, dealing with the audit, some software stuff, employee development, and copier lease. So that's pretty much our expense. Um, we do have another department in some of our revenue for um, intergovernmental revenue, uh, charges for service and those type of things are on page 83. Excuse me. So that's my budget. Sorry about the hack, but.
Oh, no worries. So significant amount of your work is with utilities. Is that just more complicated fiscal situations over there?
Um, no, it's just, um, you know, working, you know, working on the utility rates and um, you know, reviews and those type of things.
Okay.
And hide my expense.
But the collection side is still.
Collection side gets allocated to the utilities, and I think Haley, we do have some going into the general fund, don't we? About 20%.
Okay.
Yep. As we also deal with the collection of, of parking fines and, and most type of things. There's been a lot of work with the enterprise resource program, the accounting, I still like to call it the accounting system so everybody understands what it is, but that, getting that implemented and adding the modules as we've gone along, adding different modules, I think has been a, a big effort that finance has gone through the last few years. Um, we were working on the ERP when you arrived, but we had really started to implement many of the functions. So that's probably been a big focus of finance for the last five-plus years.
Pretty much. Um, you know, a lot of, before I got here, a lot of work was done on some of the accounting and purchasing and payroll modules, but um, we also use another software product for payroll that was implemented after that. So all the record-keeping and those type of things, so.
And then Russ has played a, a big part of that sanitary district master agreement. So he's, that's, he says, well, it's just to pass it off. He put a lot of time, and you know, the time we met with Ellers to go through those things. I mean, those are the, a dotting of, you know, all the i's that you have in that, that contract. So I think that's a, a huge part of what finance does in terms of addressing utility stuff.
So in, in addition to my um, operating budget, I don't think we called out anything to talk about our debt service fund. Um, debt service, when we talk to the chamber, still makes up a pretty big chunk of our tax levy. Um, what we do is we account for all of the previous debt issuance. So we collect property taxes to pay for those principal and interest payments. Debt service is on page 379. So every time we issue debt, we issue a, it's one of the few cases where a current council can obligate a future council for obligations. So when you issue the debt, you actually have a irrevocable pledge to levy taxes to pay the principal and interest payments. So the debt service accounts for basically the collection of the property taxes to make the principal and interest payments for all of our debt issuance. And then um, at one point, we had a summary, but we don't have a summary, but I can, in our financial report, we have a summary of our debt schedule, so.
But you can see on page 379, I talked about it earlier, that $2 million that we are not relying on uh, going to the fund balance. Again, that was that, because of that early borrowing, we did that $2 million transfer into the fund. And so that's going away, which is a good thing because we.
Yeah, we reduced the levy in 2023 by $2 million bucks, and this, that's not available to us in 2024. Any other questions on debt?
You took twice as long as me just.
It's because we did debt, too.
Before we wrap tomorrow, you don't have to do it now. Um, between the last time we had a bud, the budget meeting and this one, you've gotten updated equalized value numbers from the state.
Yeah, we can, um.
The reason I'm going there is just to put that spreadsheet back up, the, the one that you can manipulate the.
Yep, I can do that.
Just to show again, uh, future debt projections.
Correct. I actually had, I was looking at that earlier this morning.
Before the end of tomorrow, if we could just.
Yeah. But what I wanted to do real quick, Mr. Mayor, is under the budget overview on page 39, we can just take a quick picture, look at that picture real quick. Um, as it's looks for 2024, um, the levy increase is 3.99%. So our proposed levy to you for consideration is uh, just over $47 million. It's up of $1.8 million from 2023. You can see the various increases to the special revenue funds is, while percentage-wise is up, dollar amount is not. Uh, the general fund, which is again our main operating, uh, activity is up 2.5%. Uh, but to get to the valuation that the city manager talked about earlier, our assessed valuation outside of our tax increment districts is $3.8 billion. Our equalized value is 5.4. Now, our equalized value is going up about 10%, um, and that's already, that's the revised number. Uh, the 3.8 is still at a rough estimate because we have to kind of backtrack with um, our assessed valuations out of the, the tax increment districts, and that's not finalized. But it looks like we're having a slight increase, just under a percent, uh, in our total valuation of the entire community. Um, so accounting basics is basically, we take the levy, we divide it by the assessed valuation, not including the tax increment districts, that come up with your estimated tax rate or mil rate. That's just the, the rate per thousand. Um, if you look at the rate itself, we're looking at a 38 cents per thousand increase or 3.32%. Um, so on a, and we did this for the chamber, but on $150,000, which is our average home value, um, because we're at 90, or 69% of market, that $150,000 house that we have on the books at a hun, uh, assessed for $150,000 might sell in current market conditions around $216,000. Um, but the taxes on that $150,000 assessed value home would be $1,875 for municipal purposes, and that's about 40% of the total tax bill. Um, and so the average tax bill is going up just under $60 a year on that. It works out to about $5 a month. Um, when I do the public hearing, a little um, PowerPoint presentation, I have a, a slide that looks at what our costs are on a monthly basis for public safety, public works, and all the other things. We, we did kind of preview that with the chamber. Uh, we can, so I can pop that up today or tomorrow if you want to take a look at it.
So question.
Yeah.
I haven't heard anything about special assessments or accounting for that. Is that because we don't have a, a proof policy yet, or is that?
Ah, that was a question I thought we were going to get.
Thought we were going to get it with James, so, but that's, that's okay.
I didn't know where to.
That's okay. That's, I appreciate you bringing it up, yeah. So, um, I mean, we've done the various levels of analysis. It's really which policy options are you, are you most interested in? Uh, we've talked about, I think, Councilmember Ford has said, well, take a look at some type of relief programs. You know, we've taken a look at some of those relief programs. Some of them we kind of do already, um, by the, by the 15-year allowance. Um, but uh, I think there's amongst the council members I've spoken with, you want to do something, what you move towards is really the, the real challenge. Um, and I think that's still out there. I think the public's, I mean, my, my read on the public is, you've done a read on the public as well, is that they'd like to see something done. It's really just a matter of what you wrap your arms around. The chamber remains very interested. If one of the alternatives is a transportation fee, I can tell you that. They've expressed that to us when we've talked with them. Uh, so I would say, you know, if you.
Interested in a negative?
Oh, they're, they're totally distant, they're totally not interested at all. Um, they're concerned, and I think it goes back to the stormwater utility. Their concern is they, they talk about, you know, how it's gone up 1,000%. And I said very clearly, I said, and I own that because when I got here in 2008, we had just had floods of a massive capacity. And, and I remember having a conversation with Stu Rickman, who was then the editor of the Oshkosh Northwestern, and said, Mark, you have the ability to get this done because the public's demanding it. And so the, the increase in rates, which were actually too low at the time, they, um, in order to sell the, the fund or the utility at the time, our rates were probably a third of what they should have been, but it got our foot in the door. And once our foot got in the door, uh, we had to get it up to where it should have been, which was three times more. And on top of that, what's really lost is 2003, the year we created it, was also the year that the federal government said, now cities, you have um, these requirements to take care of stormwater quality. And that added a whole other element. Well, we added that to our stormwater utility as well. So you talk about finally catching up with overdue projects and adding stormwater quality. Um, a tenfold increase doesn't surprise me at all. Um, there is some criticism that we're one of the highest city rates in the state, but I would also say that our, a stormwater equivalent rate, we have one of the larger um, equivalent runoff unit square footage, which actually, it's about 50% higher than the city of Appleton, for example. Well, actually, that um, is a benefit to businesses because for every 3,300 square feet, that's one ERU in Oshkosh, um, it's only 2,250 square feet in Appleton. So you take three ERUs is equal to two of our ERUs, three Appleton ERUs is equal to two of ours. So actually, our rate per square foot is significantly less, but we don't get credit for that. That's okay. I know it, and I've shared it with you.
We should advertise that.
Yeah, yeah. With the businesses, I think they were pretty receptive when we told them. I don't, I don't think I had really articulated it that well before, but I do remember that because I kind of experienced the same thing when I was, uh, Appleton's immediate next-door neighbor in Grand Shute, because we had a higher number as well. So I just remembered that. So that's something that, so anyway, long way of saying, the chamber is concerned that similar to the stormwater fee, that somehow we would start saying, well, let's do more projects and put it all on the, the transportation utility rather than either borrow for it or special assess it. So that's their fear. I understand it based on our, based on how we did it with stormwater. Um, but the purpose of this for us is to eliminate special assessment. Uh, so once, if you eliminate special assessments and take it down to zero, there's nothing more to add unless you suddenly explode on the number of streets you're going to do, which I think some parts of the chamber are saying, well, we actually want you to do more streets. Well, yeah, but you want us to do more streets, but then that would increase the very fee that you don't want to see increase. So we got to reconcile that. We can't just go crazy on streets. So it's, um, so what are the alternatives? And um, you know, the various options that we've talked about, uh, you know, I guess I'd leave it up to, to you to, what things do you want us to see to move forward on? Um, and if we're going to do something like a transportation fee, we have to make sure we engage, we got to engage the business community because they will be absolutely against it. And I think we, you owe it to yourselves, you owe it to them to do that so that at least you can vet that out and decide if that's a path you want to go. I'm not a huge fan of wheel tax. Appleton implemented it. They were very proud of the fact, but now they realize the very fear that I had presented to the council, which got the council at that time to back off of a wheel tax, is, I think it's inequitable, but aside from that, the buying power is frozen in time because you have a $50 wheel tax. The number of vehicles doesn't go up or down in Oshkosh. It's pretty flat. So you're going to get the exact same amount of revenue, and the buying power of that wheel tax from five years ago is just so much less now because of cost of inflation. So that I have a concern about. And then it, it also goes to vehicles that are under 8,000 pounds. So the very vehicles that cause the most damage are the ones that are exempt from the wheel tax. So, and I'm okay calling it wheel tax, even though it's technically a vehicle registration fee. It's a wheel tax. You know, we could, we can live with the bad connotations that has. I think we just admit it, you know, it's like, it's a wheel tax. Um, so I'm not sure, uh, I'm glad you brought it up, because eventually it's going to have to come back, and you've seen the letters that you've gotten from people.
Oh, yeah.
I, I would submit to you that even some of the folks who were complaining about parking on Wisconsin Street, I hear it every once in a while. I think they're madder about the special assessments than they are about the parking. Mr. McGee notwithstanding. I think Mr. McGee, it is about the parking. But for a lot of the other residents, you hear them, and they've mentioned that special assessment. It just, I think it really grates at them.
So, um, getting back to your question, Carl, though, um, as far as the tax levy, if you look on page 39, uh, one more time, for capital improvements that are funded with levy dollars, um, we initially, in our CIP, had 1.4, and this is what I talked about before with the ARPA projects. Uh, the levy right now, as it's being recommended to you, is 1.2 for capital project, which is up from about a million bucks, but it doesn't include any other capital projects, uh, or levy to replace special assessments. It's just projects, uh, that we're not assessing, that we feel is appropriate for, to be funded by levy dollars, uh, in 2024. So, um, there's money for capital in the budget, but it doesn't include any replacement of assessments.
If I recall, uh, wheel tax, was it, how much did we project that we think that we would collect from that a year? Because I think in our CIP, what did we put in, 2 million to cover some stuff, and we were still short 2 million, if I, is that accurate?
Good ballpark figure is every $10 in wheel tax, it generated about a half million dollars.
Okay.
That's just good, because we got roughly 50,000 vehicles.
For sure. Do we, Mark, do we anticipate any more information, some of that disaggregated uh, special assessment numbers we talked about?
Yeah, I think we, I think we've gotten some of that. I wish James was here. I was looking.
Yeah, no, I realized that.
Yeah, no, but yeah, I think we can, can do that.
It sounds like you put a bone in our court that we need to come up with what we want to do next. So then I think I, we need to get that info.
Yeah, I, I apologize to you. I didn't really know where the right place is going to be, but I, I know we, so we did talk about that, like, Farnell project, it being 2.75 million. I mean, can we use a portion of that to, uh, to offset that, but then also still institute a wheel tax and then keep like a fund balance that we draw from to, to get rid of, you know, like, interest? You know what I'm saying? We have a, a pocket of money of $2 million to continually offset that interest over the course of however many years that lasts?
I think we estimated that full special assessment relief for streets and sidewalks would be in the ballpark of what, 4.5 million, Russ?
Yeah.
So we'd have to generate that. The, I'd be hesitant to use the ARPA money because it's one-time monies, no different than even the, the fund balance. And, and I would still, you know, towards the end of my initial. than even the fund balance, and I would still, you know, towards the end of my initial presentation this morning, we have, we are in excess of our 30% cap on our fund balance by $2.1 million. I think you can have a discussion about what you want to do with that. Would I use it on something that I got to find that same $4.5 million next year, and the year after, and the year after? I'm a little hesitant to do that, but if you said, for example, I'd like to reduce our borrowing by that amount of money for anything, and I think you could do that, and that might be something you may want to consider. If we're going to do something with special assessment relief, my recommendation would be find a permanent solution, and wheel tax is one of those permanent solutions. It just doesn't have the buying power because you probably have to go back and adjust it for inflation every year. Most cities that I've seen seldom do that, and so then they're like, well, where is it coming from? Well, you're borrowing more for that, and that's, you pick your poison. It's a good base, but if you keep it at, let's say, $40, and I just use that, that gets you $2 million, that gets you halfway about to eliminating special assessments.
Today.
Yeah, but what's the buying power? Because that $4.5 million was 3.6 million just a few years ago, so that buying power really gets diluted when you have inflation.
And just for reference, I believe when we were talking, to do the other option of the $5,000 dollar floor, and the sidewalks was around $2 million total, correct?
Sidewalks is about 1.4 now. It used to be a million, but now it's getting closer to 1.4, and I think that's part of the reason the cost went up to that $4.5. Am I ballparking it right, Russ? I know you're.
Yeah, I was, yeah, I am, I'm trying to think where we were at with presenting our special assessment options. I know James had done some numbers, and I reviewed some of James' numbers, and I thought we were going to try to have that as a workshop with the council, separate from the budget.
Yeah.
But what was your question on the dollar amount?
About the, how much we have to raise to eliminate special assessments, and then Carl asked specifically about sidewalks, and I thought it was up, it was getting near around 1.4 now.
Yeah, I don't, I was trying to find James' last email, and I can't find it. I'm sorry.
We can look at that at lunchtime if you'd like.
I want to look at that, and then whether it's yet today or, given that we're running a little ahead, tomorrow afternoon is going to be a good time for some good discussion, some Q and A. It gives staff enough time to give us some information, prepare for that, but definitely the right time to talk about it.
Yeah.
If not, tonight, you know, between today and tomorrow, also potentially at next week's budget hearing on, what, Wednesday night, right?
Yeah, we could do it then as well.
As well, because normally during that, that meeting, we've got a fair amount of stuff wrapped up, but it's a good time to work together. We're in a setting that we can have an open discussion, and it's appropriate still before any voting. With that, it's noon, if we want to take a break.
It's in here.
It is?
It's here.
Perfect. We'll take our break now, and we'll reconvene around 1:00.